Get inside your soul and set you free.
Set you free.
There'll be nothing that could bring you down.
Take it from me.
Let the music be your night. Let the music be your sunshine.
Let it be your sunshine.
Let the music be your guide.
Oh, oh, oh.
Let the music make it right.
Make it right, oh.
This is the time, so let's not waste it.
Not waste it, not waste it.
We gotta spread the love and have a celebration. Whoa, 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 whoa. If you let the groovy melody get inside your soul and set you free.
Set you free.
There'll be nothing that could bring you down.
Take it from me.
Let the music be your night. Let the music be your sunshine.
Let it be your sunshine.
Let the music be your guide.
Oh, oh, oh.
Let the music make it right.
Make it right, oh.
Let the music be your night.
Let it be your light.
Let the music be your sunshine.
Let it be your sunshine.
Let the music be your guide.
Oh, oh, oh.
Let the music make it right.
Make it right, oh.
Whoa. Let the music move you.
Ooh, yeah.
Let it take control.
Take control.
It's all up to you now. Feel it in your soul, oh. If you feel this music, then put your hands up. Everybody from the world, so put your hands up. If you feel it in your soul, then put your hands up. Let go. If you feel this music, then put your hands up. Everybody from the world, so put your hands up. If you feel it in your soul, then put your hands up. Just let go. Let the music be your night. Let the music be your sunshine.
Let it be your sunshine.
Let the music be your guide.
Oh, oh, oh.
Let the music make it right.
Make it right, oh.
Let the music be your night.
Welcome to Dana Point City Council Meeting of November 1st, 2016. We will now reconvene our meeting. Councilmember Schoeffel will lead us in tonight's Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. Hand over your heart and your feet after me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Schoeffel. We will not have an invocation this evening because we do not have a chaplain, so. And we also do not have any presentations or proclamations this evening. So we will move to our first item of business, the unfinished business. Arts and Culture applicants to come up in the podium for their interview. Ask the city council to write their top candidates on the voting slips. Read their selections and call for a vote. First candidate is Diane Dorlett. Diane?
Good evening. Thank you for asking me to participate in this process, and I look forward to answering any of your questions.
Okay. Questions from councilmembers?
If not...
Schoeffel, please.
I'm Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could you give us a one-hand presentation of why you want to be on the Arts and Culture Committee?
I can, yes.
I was telling you you are...
I am, yes. I've, uh, I've lived in Dana Point for, can you hear me? For, um, over twenty years, little over twenty years. And I am, uh, long interested in, uh, cities who are going through a growth spurt, balancing that growth with, uh, cultural balance and the, um, arts. I think that it, um, improves the, our community as well as balances out the perspective of the community towards our leadership. Um, my years in philanthropy work as a senior philanthropy officer, both for, well, for many, but primarily for Red Cross and Easter Seals. I have learned a lot about, um, building relationships and cultivating a, uh, interest in specific programs as well as an overview of the mission. And I do believe that each individual, as well as the city, has a mission. Um, I am an artist myself. I participated these last two times in the, um, Del Prado Art Walk. I'm very proud to have done that. I have the freedom now to, um, invest into, uh, this commission, and I look forward to joining the team. Any questions?
Oh, you have one. You mentioned in your resume that you had several chamber positions in the cities of Brea and Newport Beach and Mission Viejo. Maybe you could describe that a little bit for us.
Uh, primarily in Brea, I was involved in the, um, actually the early days of art in public places as a volunteer and also in the restructuring of, uh, our school district there some years back in order to accommodate the community as the city grew and, uh, really built a whole new, um, environment for the high school and city hall and, and so forth. In Newport, it was more, and Mission Viejo, more along the lines of, uh, uh, chamber work, volunteering to cultivate businesses, to participate in their communities, uh, of both those cities. And I also participated in Newport in, um, in a number of their art, art functions that were on the small side, but it was a beginning.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, councilmembers?
Okay.
Councilmember Miller, hold on one second here.
One more?
So, how, what do you think the Art and Culture Commission is? What do you think their role is in the community right now?
Well, to work with the, um, council and the, um, uh, various other commissions to build a balance that will reflect well on our community and draw people to our town as well as cultivate a respect for what we're doing here. I think it's real important, uh, like I said, in a process of growth where there's a lot of, um, discussion, some mild, some heated, to, uh, really have people aware of our, uh, art and cultural, uh, benefits.
What's your plan to...
Pardon me?
What's your plan to actually get us to a position like that? I mean, that's, that's...
Well, I'm a team player, so I wouldn't necessarily put my, um, plan before the plan of the commission as a whole. My, um, plan at this point is to be a willing participant as a commissioner to, um, benefit the whole. And, uh, from my interaction with the, uh, commissioners at this point, they all seem to be, um, very interested in our community and how it grows and how we interact, so I would like to be part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Councilmember Olivera, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What type of budget do you foresee the Cultural Commission having?
You know, at this point, I don't know what their budget is, so I don't know what it should be. But, um, there, it should be an integral part of the city planning if we are going to have that balance of, um, growth and, um, community involvement with the arts and culture.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any further questions? Then thank you for your time. Next candidate is Lynn Smith.
My background is when I graduated from college from Cal State Fullerton, I moved to Capistrano Beach. That was in nineteen seventy-one. In nineteen seventy-six, I bought my house and I'm in the same place, so I have a long history here of, um, loving this community. Um, it might take me slightly over a minute, but I have a BA in Fine Arts from Cal State Fullerton and a graduate degree in secondary teaching, a single subject in fine art. I'm versed and can teach ceramics, drawing, photography, textile printing, and fiber arts. I'm co-founder in nineteen eighty-seven of the Art Resource Group. We are fine art consultants to advise and, and procure art for large and small businesses, primarily around the Orange County Airport. The coal company was one of our clients. They have a major extensive photo collection. We help them, um, with procuring, uh, photographs, and I'm very versed at the professional level of hanging art in homes and businesses and in organizing and setting up gallery shows. I've organized and set up displays of the ceramic portion of the high school San Clemente art show for the last eleven years. The past two to three years, I have worked with Bernika, um, on that annual show at the Casa Romantica. We have, um, put on that show for twelve years, twelve to thirteen years, and the opening has between five and seven hundred people attending. In the music arena, I've learned to read music and play the organ in the fourth grade. In past years, I have selected the students', um, music groups, and organized them to play at the opening of, night of the Casa, uh, show. Um, the last three years, the jazz band is from San Clemente High is played there. Um, like I said, the opening has a usual attendance of five to hundred people, five to seven hundred people. In the past, I've also solicited local restaurants to provide the catering for the opening since our budget was very small. And they always support the art, so I got a lot of the restaurants to donate, um, really great, um, spreads. Um, I have long-term friends, um, in many, uh, let's see. I have long-term, many long-term friends in the music business from living around here forever, um, that are very well-known here, and I also have long-term friendships with internationally known performers in the music business. Um, I have a great interest in art in public places. I think it shows how much a community cares about its citizen and about its role, um, i- in the community as a place to present culture. Um, that's, I think it's one of our civic, um, responsibilities. Um, I'm very well of the one percent for art for the, I think it goes hand-in-hand with development, development, and then the developers put in one percent for the arts. Um, I have, um, four to five friends that have won competitions in, one in Brea who's working on a million-dollar commission now that he was awarded from the city of Brea to work with a developer on art in public places. Um, both, uh, Brea and Newport Beach have extensive public arts, and they aren't always super easy art to, that everybody agrees with, but I think, um, cities need to be progressive in the art that they, um, that the art that they choose, that they have all, art of all levels, um, that they, um, that they, um, support. Um, I can't, um, overemphasize the importance I place on art in public places for a city to present themselves. I think it's, um, one of the best things that a city can do to promote themselves. Uh, finally, I regularly attend art openings, operas, plays, both drama and musicals, and support a multitude of multicultural music groups. So that's my background in a minute or two.
Thank you. Questions from councilmembers? Councilmember, Mayor of Town, Big Sore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Awesome question, and, and, you know, I'll admit that, uh, this is not really my area, but you mentioned that, uh, you would support more progressive types of art. Can you help me understand what that means specifically? Do you have something in mind?
Well, it might be an abstract sculpture that is, maybe it evokes a human, a human form, but it's not as, e- exactly literal and, um, photorealistic per se, which is easier to understand. Artist is supposed to evoke feelings, and it's supposed to, um, bring those feelings out, and it, art is always different for everybody and what they get out of it and what the meaning is. Um, my friend, um, who is head of the art department at Saddleback, and he was a ceramic instructor, he, um, designed and built the, um, War Memorial at Saddleback. I don't know if any of you have seen it. And, um, it's very, it's just well-thought-out, and it evokes emotion, and, um, it's, it's not just a statue that's realistic of a soldier. It's all ceramic, and it was fired in place, which means that, fired in place, we built it in place, I helped build them, and, um, you fire it in place, and there's just felt on it, like the felt that you put on the space shuttle when it goes up to keep the heat from going in. And it's opened at night, and all the forms fall off, and the thing's blazing hot, and you throw sawdust on it to get different reactions, so it's, it's burned and charred, maybe like war happens. And the, the War Memorial up there, it's in the student quad, it's very, very effective. It's positioned so the light comes in at a certain time of day to honor, there's, it's one cutout of a soldier, and, um, it's very powerful. And it's not, like I said, just a bronze sculpture of a soldier, but it means so much. So that's what I mean by more edgy. And I think, um, with the experience I've had of, with, within the arts and being a consultant, that I'm not picking, you're not picking easy art, and you're not picking art that's of a high quality, because I, that's what I studied and that's what I did for a business. And I think it's important to pick high-quality art by artists that have been working a long time and have reputations, and it's something that people come to see if you have those type of artists as well. And the community's proud.
Thank you.
Did that help?
Yes, yes, it did. Thanks.
Any other questions? Councilmember Miller.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Smith, you're talking a great deal about actual art pieces in, in public. You're aware that the city does quite a bit of music in the summer, and that, how do you...
That's why I mentioned my music background as well.
Right now, and I might be wrong on this, but I think we're doing this through Community Services, the, the concerts in the park are handled there. How would you feel about, or what would be your, your position on an Arts and Culture Committee not having control of, of music component?
Was that thrown around by the council to not have them work on that?
No, I'm just asking your question, because right now, Arts and Culture doesn't oversee the concerts in the park.
Oh.
Is that correct?
So your question is how would I feel about not being able to input on that?
Mm-hmm. Because that's how it's set up right now.
Well, maybe they can work together to take suggestions. You know, collaboration's always beneficial because everybody brings their different expertises together.
So what, would you feel that Arts and Culture should have jurisdiction over that?
So who controls it now?
Community Services.
Well, I think they do a good job. They have a lot of the, the bands that imitate, you know, well-known groups, and I think the community's really happy with that. Whether the, you know, brainstorming with the Arts and Culture, maybe they could, um, have addition to that, and additional, um, types of music. Like, I've been long involved in the San Juan Capistrano Library's multicultural music series. It's very, it's been very popular for over twenty years. And so multicultural, all the different multicultural artists that have come there are fabulous. And so maybe there is other things, um, ideas that they could get if the two work together.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? Thank you for your interview.
Thank you.
Next candidate is Dory Campbell. Good evening.
Evening. How are you? Good. All right. So, uh, my name is Dory Campbell. I am a current art educator at Malcolm Elementary School in Laguna Niguel. I'm a volunteer art educator. I, um, have a Bachelor of Arts degree in art history, studying primarily public works of art, um, in the Mexican-American realm. From my perspective, I went into marketing and, um, urban land management. From an art historical perspective, I believe that cities and their organizations with planning commissions have a right, or a responsibility, rather, um, to present the public with initiatives that would reflect their town's identity. Therefore, it is my suggestion, or in my opinion, that Dana Point is really at a cusp of reinventing itself and rebranding itself as we, um, take initiatives to make this a more walkable city, or, um, attract more businesses to our city, um, and really try to embrace our residents and bring them to the forefront of being an active community involvement, and I think the Arts and Culture Commission primarily will, um, be a way to engage not only tourists who are attracted to our city, but also, um, bringing the residents back in to engage them and, uh, maybe diversify our events, um, a little bit more so that we can reinvent ourselves as a premier cultural desi- or destination, um, or re-take it to the next level, is what I'm saying. Um, I've been, uh, part of rebranding cities in Denver, Colorado, and in the surrounding, um, smaller town areas. I have also, um, been in part of, uh, marketing and wi- working with developers overseas and internationally. I come from an entertainment art family, working with artists like Maya Lin in, um, urban institutes. Um, let's see, what else? While I'm unable to project as a direct financial impact, I noticed a question that you had earlier of maybe perhaps what the Arts and Culture Commission would cost to the city. I will say that, um, from my experience, um, working with cities and towns and developers, we would, um, be able to work with the city in order to guarantee, or at least project to guarantee, a one and a half, um, X the investment by bringing those resources back into the city, because the Arts and Culture partnering with the planning commission could really bring more money back into the city if we do it in the right way. And that's my one minute. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions from councilmembers?
No, go ahead, Joe. Um, Ms. Campbell, thanks for coming in. You said you worked in Denver?
I did.
In the outlying cities? What, what smaller cities were you working in?
I have worked in Highlands Ranch, um, Erie, Colorado. Um, I've worked in, let's see, I've worked with Shea Homes and Commerce City. We developed a pro, well, we developed a community called Reunion, Colorado. Um, I've worked in Aurora, Colorado, um, with Standard Pacific. Whom else have I worked with? I worked at Fort Collins, Fort Morgan.
A follow-up to what I was getting to. What, what type of budgets do they have for their, their art in public places?
I am unable to go into divulge that information, but, um, I will say that the investment in places like Stapleton, from an outsider's perspective, because I have not worked there one-on-one, I would say that their community involvement has probably, I wish I could give you an actual number, I, I don't have it on the top of my head, but I could get back to you on that.
Okay, you said that you, you've worked with planning commissions and...
Correct.
And worked with the developer and returned one, 1.5X on the developer piece of it? So you took whatever the developer contribution was?
I was a marketing agent for, for developers, yes. Um, we worked with a, I was a part of a real estate branding firm, um, and we were a private advertising agency on behalf of the developers, and we worked with cities. Um, and I could get back to you on numbers specifically. I just, I was not aware we needed to have finances.
Just give me a ballpark number. I mean, you know, we're a small city and, you know, you're, I'm hearing a lot of...
Say, if you wanna, if you wanna invest a million dollars, I would say, um, you could guarantee maybe, maybe five hundred thousand dollars on a, on a annual. I know that's half, but I'm, I'm, I need to be really conservative because I'm not sure what the investment is from Dana Point into the Arts and Culture Commission. I'm not sure the priority scale.
Well, we're not sure either.
Okay.
Uh, you know, that's kind of what we're trying to get to, is, is we haven't had a history of spending a ton of money on arts in public places.
Right.
And I'm hearing, uh, from the last couple candidates, some very big ideas, and, uh, can you scale it down? I mean, a million dollars for arts in public places might be a stretch right now.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Okay, so...
So that's kind of what I was getting at. It sounded like you, when you worked with your other developers, that you were able to take an investment and increase it by fifty percent before you actually did the project. I was wondering how you were doing that.
Well, yeah, there's always a projected, there's always a projected cost, right? Um, so you always have to make sure that you have, um, say, I'm going to invest twenty thousand dollars in this event. If you take one of the large concerts in, um, at Doheny, or you take one of the large concerts, uh, from my perspective, I believe the city will need to add a surcharge on that event, um, if it's produced, if you're talking about the community, um, music events or community things, that, that's where you're going to get your return on your investment by an added percentage, um, in order to give back. Say, there's, you know, a hundred dollars a ticket, there's a five-dollar surcharge, a ten-dollar surcharge either way on, um, merchandise or things to give back to the city in order to, um, uh...
Okay.
Benefit.
I understand what you're saying now.
Do you under...
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate your input.
We had a new sculpture unveiled last week in town. What'd you think of it?
I liked it, yeah. Yeah, the one, um, at Camino, um, Camino Capistrano in Pines Park. Is that the one you're talking about?
Yes.
It's very inventive. I, um, enjoy, when we were, let's see, it reminded me of a presentation that we did in college where, um, we did sculptures and we had ironworks put up. I think that those are freeing, as a mom, um, of two small children. I would say that those types evoke a feeling of community, um, and those types of ironworks sculptures evoke, um, a, a community involvement and a family type of place, which I think Dana Point is, which is why I moved here. So, that's it? That's it? But, yeah, I mean, as much as possible, I think that the Arts and Culture Commission partnering with the city is a PR and marketing piece for our city in order to bring revenue back into the city as, as much as it is, uh, partnership, so, sorry for taking the time.
Any further questions? Ms. Schoeffel.
Just one, kind of an interesting, um, I, I grew up in a city that believed very much in art, culture, music, um, continuously invested in it, in its citizens, in its architecture, in its planning, in its subdivision, in its businesses, and has done so since eighteen eighty-five. In fact, um, those folks were the ones who convinced me five years ago to, um, found an Arts and Culture Commission for the city of Dana Point. Uh, and, and what they stressed to me at the time, and as I grew up, I, I came to understand, was that it's a very slow process to get from where you are, where we are, to where you want to be, uh, but it's, it's a relentless, it's an intense process, and it demands a lot of patience and, and a lot of input. So, um, I, I want to ask you a, a very short question for a very long process. If you had a choice as an Arts and Culture Commissioner between quantity or quality, which would you choose?
Quality.
And why would you choose quality?
Because as an art historian, as somebody who has witnessed family members sitting on the board of MoMA and advanced institutions like that, arts will grow as long as you invest in quality pieces that, um, the entire public can enjoy. Sometimes when you push the envelope and you say, okay, I'm gonna put a new public sculpture here, I'm gonna put a new public sculpture there, you get a lot of involvement, but you don't get to celebrate the piece or celebrate the event as, and as much as you could if you were just to eat all the Halloween candy at once. You don't get to savor that one Snickers bar, if you understand what I'm saying, for the lack of a better term.
Can I interrupt you for, for just a second and give you, and change my question just a little bit?
Sure.
Okay, do you know who the jazz artist Chris Bode is?
I'm sorry, I do not.
Okay, so do you know who, um, what, who's your favorite musician?
Um, I, I don't.
Don't have one?
I'm a, I'm a big Ben Harper fan.
Okay, so, so Ben Harper, well-known.
Yeah.
Um, has a great national, international following.
Right.
And let's say Ben Harper was, we're talking about anybody's Ben Harper now.
Right.
Be Chris Bode or Sting or something like that.
Yeah, okay, I know, I think I know who Chris Bode is now that I think about it.
So if you had a choice as the government... So if you had a choice as the governmental agency and as the commission advising the governmental agency with the limited budget that Mr. Mueller has alluded to, which is the reality in a small city, if you had a choice between having Ben Harper here once or having five performances or 10 performances of non-Ben Harper quality, but okay, which would you choose and put out to the world as Dana Point's representation of itself in this area?
That's a really good question, now that you put it like that. I, if we're talking about a public art installation piece, which is where I was going from the previous question, I would say invest in that one public art installation piece, like you did with the memorial at Sea Terrace. If we're talking about a musical event, which I think we just might have indicated that those aren't necessarily under Arts and Culture Commission, but if there are multiple events-
Let's say they are.
Okay. If there are multiple events, you would have to take a look at what the expenditure is. You know, if this is, if this is going to cost our city $10,000 plus dollars to put on every single time in resources, police, paramedics, that sort of thing, as concerts, you know, can got a little bit nutty, you need to make sure that your resources are well allocated rather than investing in a multitude of different avenues. Now, if you're talking about a really great piece of architecture or bringing in some more buildings to the city center, then I would say really do that one building or these, those six buildings well. But make sure that your budget is allocated as such so that you're not over-investing in that multitude of projects. Does that make, is that a good answer to your question?
It's a perfect answer.
Okay. So anybody else have any questions? Thank you for your time.
Yep. Thank you. Next candidate is Anthony Small.
Good evening. My name's Anthony Small, and I'm a 19-year resident of Dana Point. Thank you very much for the chance to introduce myself or reintroduce myself to you gentlemen in hopes of being chosen by you to fill the currently vacant seat of the Arts and Culture Commission. Also, it's very important out of the gate that I thank you, the city council and related services as well, for generously supporting the arts in our community, as consistently demonstrated by the fantastic attendance at the various city events and non-city-sponsored events, but particularly city events such as the Concerts in the Park, Festival of the Whales, Art Walks, Dana Point Symphony, that's a hot ticket, and even the car shows and those gatherings for our community. You know, our community participates and supports and is in fact very hungry for more top-notch arts and cultural events. Also, I'm very proud to be a resident in a city that is dedicated to art in public places, which has been spoken to, you know, by some of the previous interviewees. And, you know, the funds and the beautiful statues, the recent, the recent opening of the statue in Pines Park, the other pieces of art throughout our community, the upcoming Surfing Heritage Sculpture Gardens, which I was pleased to learn about at the last Arts and Commission meeting. Those types of things become signature and really show our city that the infrastructure and the leaders are committed to arts. And, you know, very briefly, I'd like to tell you why I do a great job on the commission. I've regularly attended and participated in the commission meetings for the last few years, the last couple of years especially, getting to work with the commissioner in cross-promoting their events with Capistrano Unified School District events, specifically the Reflections Program, a national art showcase and contest. I was the Dana Hills High School PTSA Reflections Chairman and later a committee member at the district level, organizing and even serving as the emcee of that regional event. It also should be noted that at Dana Hills, I served under the leadership of my wife Bonnie Small, who was the PTSA president for two years each at Dana Hills, at Marco Forster Middle School, and also at Malcolm Elementary School. So, kind of just like at home, I followed her direction. But, you know, community service and the arts are very, very, very big in our house as well. My kids both went through Dana Hills. My daughter Megan is a senior at the University of Oregon and will have a dual degree in theater and arts management. And my son is a freshman at UC Davis and is currently looking to study environmental studies. So again, community service and the arts are big in our house. I've also volunteered in the classrooms at Kenosha Elementary using my acoustic guitar and singing as an incentive, not only for the participation in the classroom, but especially the challenge of getting the kids at Kenosha to attend school, which is, which was a challenge. That was a great program and highly incentivized the children and was a great, great pleasure. So Bonnie and I also donated a wonderful book written by Laguna Beach Band Manager Jim Guerno, who managed, who's a friend of mine and manages such bands as No Doubt, Gwen Stefani, Nine Inch Nails, Offspring, et cetera. And he wrote that book with the bands Robbie Robertson and Robbie's son Sebastian. At any rate, Bonnie and I donated that book to nearly, to each of the nearly 60 CUSD school libraries because it came with the CD, but most importantly, it profiled rock stars or music stars and their impact on society. And that's what the arts, you know, means to me. So I'm, I'm the lead singer of a local band called Small World. We've had the honor and great pleasure to perform at Concerts in the Park, Festival of the Whales on the floating stage at Baby Beach, the Lantern District Car Shows, and also for Police Services National Night Out. Those are truly some of the proudest days of my life because, you know, because it combines that passion for the art and community. So I, at San Diego State, I was on the Cultural Arts Board, so that was, I've always had that interest. I work very closely with Sweet Relief Musicians Fund, which helps musicians in need. And that can be a rock star, if you will, or the second chair in a local symphony who may be underinsured and need assistance. And I've been in the business of minor league baseball on the sales side for a San Diego Padres affiliate for a number of years. So Councilman Shofel asked at the very start for us to communicate our passion and our excitement. And I don't think that, there are wonderful, great candidates here. I feel confident in saying that you would not find a more passionate supporter of the arts and prouder member of our community.
Shofel, please. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. And any introduction that ends in tears, I think, is passionate. Thank you. Thank you for that. And thank you for your service over all of the years. I'm going to, I'm going to ask a little different question than I did the previous applicant. And it harkens back to an article that was in the local paper recently, which is the organic growth of art. And some of the truly great art venues and municipal art venues in our city and throughout the country and throughout the world have mechanisms to facilitate the organic growth of art. So you're not just going out and purchasing it, bringing it into the town and sort of retailing it. You're actually helping it, helping it grow at a very high-quality level. So just to take non-music art, since music's easy for you, take non-music art.
Okay.
And you have to address all of those topics if you're an Arts and Culture Commissioner.
Absolutely.
How do you get a great artist or a group of great artists to come to Dana Point, invest in, open a gallery so that we can all benefit from the product and we can all benefit from the accretion to our reputation as a serious arts town? How does, what's your plan for doing that?
Right.
What would you advise the city council in terms of policies to facilitate that?
Okay. Well, the first thing before I address that question is that, yes, music does, is in my wheelhouse, but however, my experience with, you know, with the Reflections Program gave me an opportunity to learn about and be exposed to many arts, you know, dance, other visual arts, performing arts, et cetera. In answer to your question with regards to how would we make that happen, how would we incentivize them, I think that certainly there would need to be a financial incentive. And I think one of the best ways, and where the door is cracked open, one of the places where it could possibly be funded would be, you know, in the, in our arts and public places ordinance that we have in place. So again, through my previous participation and attendance at the, at the commission meetings here, I learned that, that in developments, if you will, that have a benchmark of $750,000 that a half a percent is donated, or rather attributed to arts in public places. And that's wonderful. So I would explore or ask to explore the notion of lowering, lowering that amount to 750,000. I actually believe that it's at a million, and then increasing the percentage and maybe expanding the arts in public places to include arts in other places.
Anthony, if I can get you back on the question just a little bit.
Okay, I thought I addressed it.
How do you get the great artist to come open a gallery, not the developer to, at whatever threshold the cost is for the dedication of art in public place? I'm walking down Del Prado, I'm not seeing a lot of exhibits. I'm in other cities along the California coast, I'm seeing tons of exhibitors. How do we, how do we turn that corner?
Right. And-
In a minute or less?
Okay. Well, again, I believe that through building, organically building the reputation of, you know, as an arts destination, that that would incentivize them. And I also believe, never mind the developer side of it, but with regards to the funds raised, that those could be used to incentivize or introduce our city as a great place for a gallery.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? Mayor Bartam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, clearly you're very passionate about the arts.
Yes, sir.
And a longtime resident here and big into community service, and we really appreciate that. So I guess my first question is, is this, have you ever applied for this commission before?
Yes, I actually have. There was a vacant seat approximately a year ago, and I tried to get on the commission at that time. And actually, as the playoff system, you know, works through, I made it down to the last person and my friend and friend in music, Kimberly Williams, was chosen through your process to join the council. So yes, I have tried before and would continue to try again. And no matter what, I'll continue to support the arts in our community.
I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Small.
Thank you.
Next candidate, Scott Green.
Good evening, councilmen members. Thank you, Kathy, for taking my vast amounts of calls. I'm Scott Green, eight-year resident of Dana Point. I've been listening to everyone before me and the questions that you've been presenting to all of the applicants. I feel Dana Point needs a fresh outlook, a fresh approach. In order to do that, you have to think outside of the box. I heard budgets, I heard this. In order to get people interested in Dana Point, you have to have things they want to come see and hear and taste. In order to do that, you have to do outreach. I feel as though what the commission needs to be doing is more outreach. We need to be looking at the unknown artists that are just as good as the well-known artists. We need to look at the unknown bands that are just as good as the well-known bands. You need to create some excitement when you are planning these events within the city. I feel as though that with my background in the arts, I've been a photographer for many years. I have been an art consultant, both individually and on a commercial level in Laguna Beach and around the country, Salt Lake being one of them. I'm also a part of the LGBT community. You have to bring in diversity. You have to promote diversity. Arts and culture is exactly what it means. You have to make it accessible to everyone. Living in Dana Point for eight years, I find that, yes, it's doing a great job. It's not about art exhibits, it's about making it available, it's about making it exciting. I find we don't have that yet. We need a fresh face, we need a new fresh look, we need a new output. We need individuals that are going to outreach to these large hotels, small businesses, have them be, take part in this. Have the citizens, the residents feel like they're important and they take part in this. They need to have a voice. I feel like I'm the right person for this position. I have the ability to reach out. I'm not afraid of anything. I don't take no for an answer. I would like to bring Dana Point on the same caliber as LA, as Long Beach. People drive through Dana Point, that needs to stop. People drive from San Clemente through Dana Point to Laguna Beach. Why aren't they stopping? We can create exciting things. We can do exciting things. We have to think outside of the box. Any questions? Because I can go on all night.
Any questions, council members? Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Green. You paint out an exciting picture. Do you think our Arts and Culture Commission has done a good job in those respects so far that you're talking about with the outreach and creating the excitement?
I think they've done as best as they could do. I believe a commission needs to be comprised of many different minds. For what they're offering, you know, they're doing a good job. I don't know if they've asked the question, what else can we do? Or maybe they have. I don't think they've done the outreach to ask all residents of Dana Point, diverse residents of Dana Point. So yes, they have, but I think they could do better.
So how do you envision Dana Point competing with Laguna Beach with their well-established art community and?
Understand that Laguna Beach's art community is, I would say it's really not that diverse. It's, you're dealing with plein air. You're just now seeing some cutting edge, the younger artists coming in. We don't need to compete with Laguna Beach. The places we need to compete with are like San Clemente, they're actually growing. We need to compete with Long Beach. We need to bring things that are progressive. We need to bring things that are exciting. How do we do it? We invite these young artists, these young performers, these unknowns. You make something exciting. You want people to keep coming to Dana Point. You want the trickle effect. You want them to go home and tell their friends about it, so forth and so on. That's my envision, and that's how we would do that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so Scott, since I like the name.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
The, and I like your ideas and I like your enthusiasm, but we always get down to the implementation of these things, which is, the diverse thought is the foundation of artistic expression, really throughout the world. The excitement, the passion- The excitement, the passion, but, but you have to develop policies, you have to develop implementation plans that will enable that to happen. So I'll ask you the same question I asked Mr. Small. There are three great artists who share your out-of-the-box vision of Dana Point, they would love to exhibit here, they would love to have part interest or a shared interest, something, in a gallery. How do we make, what can the city do to make that possible for them?
To bring that great artist in?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if I can ask you this question in regard to the question you asked. Why do we need the great artists?
Well, I, I, I didn't say famous artist, I said a great artist.
A great artist.
Yeah. Because there, I, I agree with you, there are lots of great artists out there who aren't famous.
That's correct.
So assuming there's a way to jury them in here and we get that quality that we talked about, how, how do, how do we make sure they, they come here and they, and they stay here long enough to be noticed?
I, I think, um, when you are procuring artists, um, are you speaking of the whole board of artists, or are you thinking of visual? I mean, there's so many types of...
I'll, I'll just stay with visual for the time being, since that was the question I created this last.
You can do a jury of, of great artists. I think with artists, and I'm speaking as myself, artists like prestige, they like, um, notoriety, they like being made known, they want people to appreciate. So I think when we do an event that is procuring art, you want Dana Point to acknowledge, you want Dana Point to do its part and, and be a platform for this, this great artist to become even greater. It has to be desirable. That's how I think we would get the great artists.
So, and I don't mean to belabor it, but how, how does the city do that?
We, we outreach, we seek, we go to the universities, the local schools, we, we do advertisements, um, social media. We make it known that we are an up-and-coming city, we're looking for great artists to take part in our growth. Social media is a great way to do this.
And, and once you've attracted them, how do you get them to be able to afford to come here? Because a lot of great artists don't have a lot of money.
Well, then you, you had asked about budgets. I think, um, that being said, how do you get them to afford? Visual artists, you're talking a number of varying factors, but I think with budget-wise, we have to be able to bring these starving artists here. If we like what they have, we need to find a way to get them to exhibit it, if it means covering airfare, if it means partnering with our local hotels. Whereas though it doesn't cost Dana Point anything, we have the hotels here. We need to make sure we have these, these platforms set up, so the expenditures aren't a lot. We need to make the great artists coming here and exhibiting affordable.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from other council members?
Oh, come on, you guys have to have questions.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, guys, um, why don't we take a first stab at it, write your top three candidates on, on your ballots, and then Madam Clerk will do a roll call for the result. Thank you. Everybody ready? Nope? Okay. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Olvera.
Small, Campbell, and Green.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller.
Green, Small, Campbell.
Thank you. Councilmember Schoffel.
Yeah, um, Green, Small, Campbell.
Thank you. Mayor Portem Vixorak.
Anthony Small, Dory Campbell, and Diane Rolle.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
I have Anthony Small, Scott Green, Dory Campbell.
Thank you. By a majority of three votes, I have, uh, Mr. Small with Mayor Tomlinson, Mayor Portem Vixorak, and Councilmember Olvera all voting for him in the first, as the first position.
I think that's it. What, what's the term left? Is it two years?
Uh, until next June.
Until next June, okay.
They're basically just taking Judith's term.
The remainder of her term.
Correct. And then we'll go back out in the, next June with the other positions that are available at that time.
Congratulations, Mr. Small, on, you, you have a small term, but, uh...
[laughing]
And thank you for all the candidates for applying this evening. You guys did answer some really tough questions, um, and thank you for coming out this evening and spending your, part of your evening with us, and thank you very much. Okay, moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council, the public, or staff request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Are there any items to be removed by staff? Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, staff would like to pull item number nine.
From the public, Madam Clerk.
Yes, number eight, please.
Eight. And from council? Nothing? Guys, okay.
Move the balance of the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Been regularly moved and seconded, that's the remainder of the consent calendar may be forward. Please cast your vote. Motion passes five to zero, thank you. All right, item number eight, Mr. Killebrew, a staff report.
Item number eight is the monthly city treasurer's report, um, that is required under state law to be submitted to the city council, and it shows a listing of our cash and investments. And I'm available to answer any questions.
No? We have one public speaker this evening, Mr. Buckhill, please come to the podium.
Buckhill, from Capistrano Beach, eighteen-year resident and favorite of budget reports. I just had an interesting question that occurred to me. The, uh, the cash balance since June has declined by 2.8 million. And to my definition, when you spend more than you receive, that's a deficit of 2.8 million in the last three, in the three, first three months of the year. And I have no clue why it went down that much. I wonder if any of you do, councilman. I think the financial reporting that you're getting from the city is inadequate. There, there ought to be some way of revealing, we're spending more money than we're taking in, here's what, what it consists of, here's how we're doing versus our budget. So I've argued a couple times in this meeting for quarterly financial statements, and we got one on the third quarter, just after that last argument I had. I would urge you to ask for that kind of report on a regular basis, and quarterly seems like kind of a minimum thing. And, and the other item on the, this agenda, item seven, is just a list of all the checks that have been written. I know that the city must know how they're doing versus budget and cash flow as predicted and so forth. And it seems like it ought to be reported to you all, so you'd, like, last meeting, you made a million-dollar decision to put in the new police substation, and you did, did you know that you had blown 2.8 million through that same time? I think you should know it and, and should, should appreciate it. So I, I would urge you to ask that Mike, who's very capable of producing this kind of report, produce such a report for you on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That ends public discussion.
I, I could respond really quickly if you want. Okay, we did, we did post the, uh, financial report for the fourth quarter, uh, we did send it to the city council, and it was posted on the city's website. Uh, that was done a couple weeks ago. It has unaudited, uh, numbers, where I'm reviewing the final audited, uh, annual financial reports as we speak, uh, just got them, uh, Monday. And, uh, the city is, is on target this year. There's nothing out of the ordinary. You'll always see timing differences at any given point in time, uh, as far as particularly capital projects where, um, you know, the payments aren't necessarily regular every month, you're going to see them come in fits and spurts as the projects, uh, get completed and the invoices are approved. So, you know, I don't know what else to say, but we are, we are on target, and we did produce the, uh, fourth quarter reports. And the, uh, first quarter reports for this year, uh, that just finished, uh, four weeks ago, we're in the process of producing. Um, so, I don't know what else I can add. Oh, and the other thing is, every expenditure that the city makes, um, is included in a monthly report to the city council. You see our check runs. So every vendor payment, uh, that the city makes a payment to, including the funds that the monies come out of, uh, there's one in one of the consent calendar items tonight. So if you want to see what the, if anybody wants to see what the city's spending money on in any given month, uh, we post all of our checks, uh, and bring them to the city council.
That's item seven, Mr. Killebrew? That's item number seven, correct?
Yep. That is correct, the register of demands.
I'll move, uh, let's see, just open it up for discussion amongst council members.
Isn't it just a receive and file, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, receive and file, that is correct. I'll make a motion to receive and file. I want to second that again, Mr. ... Okay. It's been regu, any further discussion? Please cast your vote. Motion carries five to zero, thank you. Mr. Killebrew, item number nine, please. Staff report.
The next item is a resolution for a final track map and a subdivision improvement agreement. And I'm going to quickly, uh, turn it over here to Deputy City Manager Mark Denny, who's very quickly followed by Ursula Luna Reynosa.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for your consideration tonight. It's the final track map for the South Cove project at 34202 Del Abyspo. Final track map sets in place the location of the public and private infrastructure improvements for the project and outlines the applicant's conformance with the city's conditions of approval for the project. The most significant improvements are the proposed park at PCH. Ursula and her staff have taken a lead on that, and she's got a brief presentation for you tonight. And then staff is available for questions afterwards, if you like. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm going to wake up these two scouts I have sitting here. I know them both personally, Ben Schatmeyer and, uh, Jack Hayes, so welcome to our civic process here. Um, I'm excited to give you this presentation this evening on the, uh, the Zephyr Development is the development that we're going to chat about. So first, to orient, um, everyone, the project is shown on the screen here. This is the old mobile home park site. You can see Pacific Coast Highway in the foreground and Del Abyspo over on the side. When this project was entitled, it had to go through a rezoning, which went before, um, we, staff had to work with the Coastal Commission on that, and a mixed-use zoning designation was provided. And... So the original developer, who's not the current owner, uh, they proposed this idea of, uh, a park, um, along Pacific Coast Highway, um, to get the mixed-use designation. And staff was sort of scratching their head, um, you know, sort of think of tot lots and thinking about park on this very busy street, it didn't necessarily seem like an appropriate use. Um, and shortly thereafter, uh, an article, I think I get just close enough, I think, there we go, uh, an article in Sunset Magazine was featuring Highway One, and it begins with, uh, this article begins with Highway One begins unceremoniously emerging from a tangle of freeway ramps in Orange County's Dana Point. There's a glimpse of ocean, but it isn't until Laguna Beach that Highway One becomes Pacific Coast Highway in more than name. So not necessarily the most flattering description of our entrance into town. And as staff, uh, thought about this and thought about this idea of this, this park project, we started thinking about it in a little bit more of an unconventional way and thinking of, we have an opportunity, this is a blank canvas, and we can retell the story. We can use this as an opportunity to, to tell a better story and, and embrace that Highway One actually begins here in Dana Point. Um, we wanted to make sure that there was some symmetry as you came into town. And when the city redid the, the bridge, they redid this historic fence that separates Doheny State Park from Pacific Coast Highway. And so we talked to the developer about ensuring that the fence that was going to separate the public park, which you can see over, over here, the public park improvements from the private development, that we wanted that fence to match what was on the other side of the road. And also, the same palm trees that were used, we wanted to create a little bit of a, a rhythm along the street there as well, to create a bit of synergy as you entered into town. And it's interesting that this item is before you at the same night when you were doing Art and Culture Commission, um, interviews, because we will talk about art in public places tonight as part of this project. So I'm going to focus on what has been, um, not very creatively called the, um, East Plaza for now. And so that's this, um, eastern plaza over here. You have the trail, the bike trail that goes underneath the, the freeway underneath Highway One to Doheny State Beach. And, um, there's going to be a better connection from that onto this, um, new improved plaza. And this is really all about sort of California and, and the history of California and Dana Point's relationship to that history of California. Um, and so it's a, a unique story that is envisioned to be told over here. And, um, again, really embracing the fact that Highway One begins in Dana Point. Some of you may be familiar with this historic photo. The site that we were just looking at is in, in the background, this is the old Dana Villa Motor Inn that's in the foreground of it. And way over here, you can see this old Richfield Tower that used to exist, and the existing Arco gas station that's adjacent to the site was, was the site of this. These Richfield Towers were built along the coast of California and actually even up into the coast of Oregon. And folks would say there's a, there was a beacon at the top of it, and that, when you were coming back from Catalina, you could see that, that beacon. So it was a really tall structure, uh, it was sort of a landmark, uh, here in the area. And so we didn't want to replicate it, it's too, too big, we could never replicate that today. But we told the, the landscape architect that the, um, that the, actually now current owner and developer, Zephyr, is working with, they retained Summers Murphy, who's a local landscape architect here in town, they have their office on Pacific Coast Highway, said, use this as an inspiration, don't replicate it, but use it as an inspiration to come up with a, an iconic feature to really say that Highway One does begin here. We want to leverage that. Highway One is a phenomenal route that people travel from all over the world to, to drive up. We're a tourist destination, we're a visitor destination, and we wanted to have people be able to start that journey, and stay in our hotels a couple days and, and really celebrate this rich, uh, California culture and, and leverage the Highway One brand, if you will. And so this spot has been indicated as a place to do that, and you can see on the map here. And here is what, um, collectively has been, um, designed. And so this is a, a tower in the form of the Richfield Tower. It also, it takes elements from the bridge, so the base is a stucco to match the bridge. It would be three-sided, just like the original tower was, it has the original beacon on top with Pacific Coast Highway. And there's opportunities at the base to tell the story, to, to talk about Dana Point, use some of the decorative tiles from the bridge, to also tell the Richfield Oil story. And, uh, there's a tower somewhat similar in Colorado that lights up with LED lighting, and it's proposed that this could do the same thing. So then, there's another feature here, a California 3D topographical map that would be in the center of this plaza. And this map is envisioned at the foreground to be about eighteen inches tall and to get taller in the back, to sort of slant up and to show all of the iconic surf spots along the coast of California. And even to show the sort of breaks that those waves have at those different, um, surf spots. At the top, it's envisioned, it's not shown here, but along the top, that there would be sort of laser-cut in metal California, so it would be really large. We wanted all of the, the artwork, the monuments, whatever you want to call them, to be vehicular scale, so as all the cars that drive by on Pacific Coast Highway can actually see and, and experience this, this artwork in these plazas, as well as pedestrians who can get a more intimate experience when they walk up to them. So then there's three opportunities for some interpretive signage that you can see. Uh, I forgot to mention that all of the plantings in this area would be California drought-tolerant. It would be a botanical garden feeling, there would be nameplates for the common name, the botanical name... There would be nameplates for the common name, the botanical name, as well as a code that your phone could, what are the QRS codes, I think, is that what they're called? So you could go to the nursery and pick out those plants yourself, plant them in your own yard. We wanted this all to be sort of an educational experience in a fun way, and again, really focused on California and its history in this particular plaza. And then those are pavers, decorative pavers on the ground, again, with the palm trees that were mentioned. So then there's these three opportunities for interpretive signage. You would walk up to them, and so you can see they're in the landscaped areas, so you wouldn't need to view them from the back. And I'm not sure if you can see this, but the top one was to talk about the history of Highway One. We have some great block and white photos showing in Dana Point mules pulling railroad ties to pave Highway One in Dana Point. I think the first segment was in Big Sur, and over the years, it was all connected. So we would tell, we would tell that story with pointing out the Dana Point component. Another idea is to talk about the history of the missions along the coast in California, and specifically to talk about Richard Henry Dana's involvement with Mission San Juan Capistrano, and that was a big part of why he decided to locate here. And the third one is to talk about the California Coastal Act and what that did for the coast along California. So those are the three exhibits that are envisioned for this plaza, and again, really celebrating California and Dana Point's connection to that history. So then, moving, oh, and then we have a Highway One custom bike rack. And that last slide showed the location, and this is to show, up top, this is a development in Costa Mesa called Soco, and that's the look and feel of these bike racks. Again, so as you're driving by, it's just as much about form as it is function. We wanted these to be really cool-looking signs that as you drive by, you see, and again, this is about the California history on this side. And this is just a perspective as you're driving into town, that you can see all of the different monuments and signs in that eastern plaza. So moving on to the western plaza, which is over here, denoted, be in between the Denny's and the Carl's Jr. Again, it was initially, when this idea, this blank canvas, there was this idea of having large sculptural elements that were, again, a vehicular scale as you're driving by, and to really celebrate our surf culture and heritage. And that was discussed a little bit at the last meeting, and actually, it was mentioned that Dick Metz was, we consulted with him on this project, and I'll show you in a minute why we did that, and that was where this kind of re-energized discussion about the Surf Museum coming to Dana Point started. But on this particular museum, plaza, we wanted to have these life-size sculptures to really celebrate the surf industry, that the birthplace of the surf industry is here in Dana Point. And so, these are a list of some pictures of some folks that are of consideration. There are different names here, and we've been engaging with different folks to kind of really vet these names, what are the right names. And the Hobie Alter Memorial, which some of you may have heard of with the passing of Hobie, the foundation has been created and they're fundraising, and they've started designing a fantastic monument to celebrate Hobie's life. And it's been really great in some of these discussions to hear that Hobie would never have wanted this. He was a very humble man, and he would have been not too, not too happy about this celebration of him. And so, we thought later, well, let's surround him with some of his friends as well. That really started this surf industry here in Dana Point. And so, we were already talking about this sort of idea when we heard about the memorial and thought, this is the perfect location for this. And since then, we've had discussions with the Hobie Foundation, with the family, and there is consensus that this is the right location for the memorial. These other circles represent these tribute statues of local pioneers for the surf industry. And this gives you a perspective of the scale. And these are three-story buildings in the background, and you can see the Hobie Memorial. It gets center stage. If I can back up, there is a little bit of commercial square footage at the ground floor right behind the Hobie Memorial with an entrance into the project. And so, it was very thoughtfully decided where the Hobie Memorial should go, giving it the most prominence. And then, again, with sort of his friends and fellow pioneers in the industry to be surrounding him. This gives you an idea of the scale, it, they're full life-size scale statues on a base. So again, as you're driving by in a vehicle, it makes an impression, so you get to experience this, even if you don't actually get out. They all have bases where they would tell the story, and it's a very specific Dana Point story. This wouldn't make sense to be anywhere else. It doesn't make sense to be in Huntington Beach or Santa Cruz or Oceanside or anywhere. This is a very specific story to Dana Point. And having worked for a number of cities that have really tried to brand themselves and work on that, this is a story that any city would die to be able to tell, and we are lucky in that it's authentic and we get to tell it. So there's some opportunities for some additional signage on the back fence there. Some ideas are to talk about the history of Doheny State Beach, of Killer Dana, also to have an exhibit celebrating current surf stories. We have a young lady who lives in Capo Beach, who just won the longboard surf championship in China last year, and she just won another big competition in Japan. So this would be interchangeable, where it's not just about our past, but it's also our present and our future. And we haven't determined the location yet, but to have a reader board sign that's directly linked to Surf Line, that this community sort of embraces the surf culture so much that you get to know, you know, is the surf up or down? What's the water temperature? What's the air temperature? Sort of celebrating that as you come into town. And here, we have a couple more of those bike racks. So one would say Doheny, one would say Killer Dana. Again, this picture to the right is just to give you a sense of what the form of those would be. And this is an image, again, from a perspective somewhat from your vehicle, driving by, seeing some of the art pieces in place. Everyone we've chatted to about this project has been really excited, really excited about this story that it conveys. I heard earlier somebody talking about during the interviews about really finding art that talks about your heritage. Again, this is, this story only happened here, and so we're really excited to tell it. This project is required to do an Art in Public Places fee, but it's also required to do a park dedication under the Quimby Act and under our subdivision ordinance, which is why this is coming before you tonight as part of the final map, which is part of the subdivision. So, the developer is required to dedicate a certain portion of land and/or pay in loofes. And so, the total dedication is approximately one and a half acres that they're required under our ordinance. This park, when you put it together, is about half an acre, so they're going to pay an in-loof fee for the remaining acre that they're not installing. And that remaining acre is about $2.3 million worth of park dedication and loofes. And so that money is going to pay for these improvements, along with the Art in Public Places fee, which as mentioned, is a half percent of their building valuation when they come in for building permit. Because this will be phased over time, we don't know exactly what that number is, because as they come in to pull building permits, it'll be valued and then they'll, they'll pay half a percent. So we don't know exactly how much that number is. We know it'll be at least $200,000 at a minimum and probably closer to $300,000. But that will also pay for what we're proposing to contribute toward the Hobie Memorial, toward the foundation. But we'll be coming back to you in the future with an MOU between the city, a proposed MOU between the city and the Hobie Memorial Foundation to, to talk about memorializing that. So, with that, I will go back to my seat, but, and available as Mark to answer any questions you might have.
Any public comments, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor.
I didn't think so. I'll open up for questions from council as well.
Just a quick clarification. We did recieve some letters of support that we included in the packets.
Questions from council?
No. No questions, just a comment, Mr. Mayor. Outstanding.
I would move the recommended item.
I'll second that.
I have one question.
Oh. What's that?
Who, are we going to use local artists for the sculptures?
Yes, there is, well, I mean, I guess you should define local. There are, there's a local artist that we're chatting with. There is an artist also that actually grew up on Beach Road. He's now in the Ortega area residing. That is really interesting. He's actually almost part of this story. He grew up with a lot of these folks, knows them personally, knew them personally, and we're talking with him as well. But ultimately, the developer will be commissioning the artwork, and we as a city are trying to help connect them with some of those local artists, and those discussions and meetings are happening.
Okay. I'll second the motion. Please cast your vote. Motion carries five to zero. At this time, the city clerk will read the title of ordinances listed on the agenda. There are none.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one ordinance introduction titled to read, and it's part of item number 10. And it, it's a long one, I warn you. Okay. It's a first reading and introduction of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Dana Point, California, amending chapters 8.02, 8.03, 8.12, 8.14, 8.16, 8.20, 8.24, 8.26, 8.28, 8.30, 8.32, 8.34, 8.36, 8.38, of Title 8 of the Dana Point Municipal Code, adopting by reference the California Codes of Regulations Title 24, Parts 1 through 12, known and designated as the 2016 Edition of the California Building Code, 2016 Edition of the California Residential Code, 2016 Edition of the California Electrical Code, 2016 Edition of the California Plumbing Code, 2016 of the California Mechanical Code, 2016 Edition of the California Administration Code, 2016 Edition of the California Reference Standards Code, 2016 Edition of the California Energy Code, 2016 Edition of the California Green Building Standards Code, 2016 Edition of the California Historical Building Code, 2016 Edition of the California Existing Building Code, and the 2016 Edition of the California Fire Code, making amendments thereto and related actions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the public comments portion of the agenda. There'll be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for this public comments portion of the agenda. At the mayor's discretion, the balance of the public comments will be heard after the new business portion of the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional, courteous decorum during their comments. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. The city clerk will decide, any handouts you have? Please remember to state your name and city of residence for the record. Okay, I have Craig Williamson first, Landon Williamson following that, and Thomas Volkman.
Dear council members, as an architect with over 25 years' experience, I can tell you it's been an enlightening four months. I've learned that project approvals and enforcement of code is apparently entirely discretionary. After having literally millions of square feet of my projects built, I never knew this. In the state of Dana Point, it's true. But hey, I'm not an attorney, and the city apparently likes to use theirs to the fullest. Council members, we've been copied, you've been copied on our correspondence with the city manager and the director of community development regarding 34091 PCH, also known as Coastal Kitchen. We presented the city with over 40 violations of the Dana Point Municipal Code, CUP, site development permit, lack of permits, parking deficits, et cetera, and after months, no action of the director of community development finally did something. But she, all she did was forward our letter to the owner and tenant. No citations, no warnings, nor a clear direction of which violations she thinks are applicable, remedies, or even deadlines as required by the Dana Point Municipal Code. The director said that the response, in her response, "Many of the alleged violations are no longer enforceable based on the owner's vested rights." What about the residents and existing businesses of Dana Point? Do we have vested rights? Is an enforcing code impartially due to the role of the director of community development? The city hired their attorneys to defend the strands developer, yet in our case, the city hired their attorneys to find a way to not enforce code on the owner and tenant because they were afraid the city would get sued for doing their job too late. We've come to the understanding, to understand that with the community development, there's a culture of favoritism of outside commercial interests over existing businesses and residents, and to avoid being the bad guys, the city will actually pit residents against the businesses as they did by forwarding our letter rather than issuing warnings and citations as required by the Dana Point Municipal Code. And the director hid behind our letter. As we knew, know, this type of culture starts from the top and needs to change. 34019, 34091 PCH and Coastal Kitchen was administratively approved without a coastal development permit and many other approvals administratively falsely granted by the director. The building official confirmed neither this project nor any other project within the city complies with the provisions of Cal Green, not just the noise ordinance, but others like short-term and long-term bike racks and others set forth. Cal Green was adopted by the city with no objections, so why is the city ignoring an entire code? And if it's an oversight, I question whether or not the director is qualified for the position. The position, the business is violating conditions of their CUP on a daily basis. We have provided the city with pictures for violations. I'll finish with, based on all the violations presented, is the city, is the director qualified? Or is she favoring outside commercial interests? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Landon Williamson, please. Lad, I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name.
Yes, Landon. Good evening.
Thank you, sorry about that.
I stood here before you on June 21st, broke down in tears as a result of the significant impact lack of sufficient parking provided by Coastal Kitchen Restaurant has had on the quality of our lives. As architects, we became curious to look into the permitting process of this property, and as of today, we have had over 40 violations during the permitting process. I will start by parking violations to remind the director of community development unlawful permitting process that has become a culture favoring businesses rather than staying impartial and violating code that was adopted by city, which in my view, should raise the question to whether you are qualified to be holding one of the highest positions in our city. Ms. Reynosa, you had granted a 50% parking reduction to this property with no supporting document, that it will not be adversely affecting the surrounding properties, as it clearly did. On top of that, six tandem parking with no CUP, an additional five parking deficit, which the architect has submitted valet plans, but was never approved under CUP, nor has the restaurant ever hired a valet to compensate for the deficit. We brought up this matter to your attention on August 24th, again, October 3rd, which you finally responded by laughing at me and promising to have a written response, and as of today, you have yet, we have yet to receive any response, nor the restaurant has been issued a citation or even a warning. Per Dana Point Municipal Code, this is considered a misdemeanor. But in a city where the community director finds it funny, because perhaps the only way it can ever be enforced is for us to sue the city, you feel confident enough to never address the issues until sued. How does anyone who worked hard to pass Measure H believes the city will obey by the code and enforce it? As I briefly go through the violations, I wanted to remind you, Ms. Reynosa, that allowing the restaurant to violate accessibility requirement of code is discrimination against people with disability. Allowing the restaurant to block an exit without notifying them for the past month, since we brought up this matter to your attention, jeopardizes people's health and safety should a fire had happened. Allowing the restaurant to violate noise provision of Cal Green, granting them an exception simply because no employee has yet complained about the excessive noise they're being exposed to diminishes the quality of their workplace and exposes the city to liability should a lawsuit occur by one of the restaurant employee. Allowing the business to operate within five, with five parking deficit not only diminishes the quality of residents' lives and the value of their property, but also unfair to all surrounding businesses. After one month of spending our tax dollar on city attorney, so they can try to find a way to get the city out of having to enforce provisions of code, you send a copy of our letter to the restaurant without any clear distinction. And as I quote you, "Many of the alleged violations are no longer as applicable as they were." are no longer as applicable as they were specific to certain phases of the entitlement." My question is why so many violations occurred during the permitting process? Were they mistakes overlooked by you? Which perhaps raises the question whether you are qualified to hold this position or because you have favored the business? I sincerely request council member to look into these matters and her performance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thomas Volkman, please.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Volkman. Resident at Dana Point. I own property at 24402 Del Prado, a commercial property. I've owned since 2000. I bought my first home in Dana Point 39 years ago. And it's approximately the total time I've been in business. So I have a vested interest in the future of Dana Point. To begin, I have the utmost respect for the city council, realizing the many hours you spend dedicating yourselves to the service of our community. I've always considered Dana Point as my community and have also committed a number of hours involved in civic affairs and city service as well. When faced with problems, most communities confront them by supporting each other in the resolution of those problems. That's why I was surprised to be, in a way, ambushed by a legal demand letter from a law firm representing the city. I was also surprised that this process was conducted with complete secrecy. I attempted to contact the council and city staff for clarification, but was largely ignored. This forced me to hire legal counsel to communicate with the city's lawyer and attempt to negotiate a desperate extension of the timeline. To equate almost 40 years of business to a 30-day compliance and a possible 90-day closure did not seem quite reasonable. So far, my legal fees are upwards of $5,000, which my family can ill afford. I admit that there were compliance issues before, and I worked with city staff in good faith to resolve them, but to still maintain a profitable business that serves the community and supports five local families. It's claimed I ignored compliance orders for 14 years, but I'm sure the city would have contacted me if there were egregious violations present in the operation of my business. Over the years, the city staff had every opportunity for inspection and observation of my day-to-day operation, but chose to order ignore my business as I believe the practices conducted were unobtrusive to my neighborhood and my community. In conclusion, it would have been so much easier if city staff already on payroll contacted me of perceived violations and give me a reasonable timetable for resolution of the issues and advice on compliance. The use of outside legal assistance was not only unnecessary, and I believe ill-advised, but extremely expensive on both sides. I'm disappointed that our city has to resort to these tactics to resolve our problems. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The last speaker will be Robert Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Robert Williams. I live in Dana Point. I live directly behind the alley from Mr. Volkman's business. And I'm speaking here only as a neighbor of his. Last night, I picked up a copy of the Dana Point Times, and there was an article about his closure. And one of the comments in there was that there was a neighbor that had complained. And I just wanted to be, so I came over to his business this morning, and I said, "I just wanted to be clear to you, I didn't make a complaint." And I'm sure as your city records would reflect, I didn't make any, and my wife didn't make any complaint. And we are probably the most impacted because we are directly behind. We're in the, it's 24401 Santa Clara, which is the Woodruff House. It's right behind there. We've only lived here a year. We moved here in October of 2015. When we moved in, we had some graffiti, some gang tagging on the back of our wall. Mr. Volkman sent some employees over, notified us that it happened. We filed a city, we filed a police report. And the city came out and painted it, but the color was kind of off. We bought some paint, and Mr. Volkman's employees offered to repaint the wall for us. It was a, felt a very neighborly thing to do. You know, we moved there, we knew all about, we got disclosures that said there was a, an automotive repair service there. We knew they were commercial and industrial uses. So we moved there knowing that there was going to be the noise associated and the traffic associated with auto repair. We still decided to live there. Mr. Volkman's business, they don't do, they're there, you know, during normal business hours. I think they start at eight, they leave at five. They put a shade tent up for their employees. We hear the noises that you normally associate with, you know, with automotive repair businesses. But it's during business hours, it's not on the weekends. And so from my perspective, he's been a good neighbor and has been respectful to us. In fact, I have more problems with the noise from the trash trucks that go through at 4:00 in the morning than I do from Mr. Volkman's business. So I don't know what the code violations are. I know nothing about that. I didn't, I didn't raise any of those issues. I hope that the code enforcement people are able to reconcile that with him because I think he's been a good neighbor. And I appreciate his respect to us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes the public comments portion of our agenda.
Mr. Mayor, if I could perhaps comment a little bit on the public comments we had this evening. It's an interesting dilemma. You're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't here. We have some people coming in complaining that we're not taking code enforcement action. Then we have other people coming in complaining that we do take code enforcement action. The city takes code enforcement very seriously. It has a full-time staff that handles these matters. And it handles them very diligently. And there's a process that we follow. We don't just jump off and crack somebody because we get a complaint. We go through a very methodical process to make sure that we're balancing the interests of both the people who are complaining and the people who are being complained about. So for instance, in Mr. Volkman's case, I just flipped through quickly through the file, and we have something around a dozen efforts since 2002 to get Mr. Volkman to come into compliance with the code. We've met with him on numerous occasions. We've given him numerous notices of violation. He's made multiple assurances to us that he was going to fix the problems, and he never did. Finally, we got to a point where we felt the need to take action. So we sent him a notice that we would be taking legal action because of all of these efforts in the past that had failed. And I'm surprised he's here tonight complaining because just this morning, he signed a settlement agreement to resolve the matters. And in that settlement agreement, we gave him a year to solve the problems, which is what he asked for. There's a time schedule to bring some of the more egregious problems into compliance quickly. But we've given him a full year to bring the entire situation into compliance because we're trying to work with him and find a reasonable middle ground. In contrast, we get complaints about Coastal Kitchen from the other speakers. Well, we investigated them. For instance, we did multiple noise studies in response to the noise complaints, and we concluded there wasn't a noise problem. The Coastal Commission is compliant with the city's objective noise standards. There's a number of other complaints they made, many of which frankly, most of which frankly, have no merit whatsoever. What we've done is we've put the owner of the restaurant on notice of the complaints, and it's the beginning of a process where if there are ongoing violations, we will take action as appropriate. So in any event, it's just sort of an interesting observation, as I said, is one of these situations where you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't. And code enforcement, I will tell you, has a very difficult job because nobody seems to be happy when they come knocking on their door.
Thank you, Mr. Manias. The next item on our agenda this evening is public hearings. A staff report on item 10. Mr. Kellebu, please.
Item 10 is the exciting laundry list of ordinance adjustments that Kathy got to read a little while ago. And I'm actually going to turn it over to our community development group to do a quick presentation and bring us up to speed on what they're proposing.
I'm just going to hand it right over to Eric Higginie, who Mark Sutton has done this process multiple times. He let me know that it was time again to do the code update, and he's actually quantified it to 50 hours. It's 50 hours of effort to do the code update. And that's after years of experience in doing this. So Eric admitted it took him a little bit longer than 50 hours, but he was coming in on his own time because he's doing his other jobs. So in the evenings, putting in a lot of time to get this done, bring it before you this evening. And I want to give Eric the opportunity to give the presentation on his effort.
Honored mayors and members of the city council, before you tonight for your consideration is the adoption of the 2016 California Building and Fire Codes, Associated Standards, and other related codes. The building codes have a rich history, and they have been greatly enhanced from the first published Uniform Building Code since 1927. The codes before you tonight are the most up-to-date codes that are available. These codes have been developed through a national code development process, which is a three-year process. Once through the national code development process, the state assigns the task of review and adoption of the codes to the California Building Standards Commission. After the state adopts and publishes the California codes, the Orange County building officials, along with the fire officials and the building industry, work together to formulate the adoption packages for county and cities in an effort to foster uniformity. Each different code cycle focuses on those areas that need to be adopted. The 2007 codes transformed the codes from a prescriptive-based code to a performance-based code. This also includes, included the major overhaul of the structural provisions. The reengineering of those provisions allowed the code to address all different types of projects, taking into consideration the needed design criteria for each geographic region. The 2010 codes introduced a residential code, which brought together the requirements for one and two-family dwellings and townhomes. It also included the nation's first green building code, which addressed the sustainability issues for new construction. Additionally, the 2010 codes recognized the need for fire sprinklers in new construction and the safety that it brought to its occupants. The 2013 codes focused on bringing the state's Title 24 accessibility requirements in line with the federal ADA requirements. As you may be aware, California was one of the leaders in the nation to address accessibility issues and develop standards similar to the federal ADA requirements. Now, the 2016 codes continue to focus on aligning the state's Title 24 accessibility with the federal ADA requirements. The updated codes also strengthen some of their structural provisions to allow a built environment to withstand extreme conditions such as seismic events. Additionally, the new codes include sustainable elements in new developments such as EV charging stations and bike ride. The new codes bring in changes from the previous additions and will require training for the building and safety staff, as well as the design professionals, contractors, and developers that are providing services in our community. Staff is working on developing additional training opportunities that will assist our development community to adjust to the changes in the upcoming codes. The state law requires that the cities and counties to adopt the most recently published building codes every three years. The 2016 edition of the California codes, as adopted and published by the California Building Standards Commission, are mandated to go into effect along with any adopted local amendments on January 1st, 2017. So joining us tonight is deputy fire marshal Timothy Kerbrat from Orange County Fire Authority. This concludes my brief staff report. Tim and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council members? Mr. Councilmember Olivera, go ahead.
It's, it's the engineer in me. Page 61, paragraph 14, a new section is added. Sky lanterns or similar devices.
I saw that.
Ignition or launching a sky lantern is prohibited. What is a sky lantern?
These are the lanterns that you would see, that they have a little candle in them, and you light them up and let the hot air of the balloon raise it up in the air.
That's how the Japanese launched an attack on the Pacific coast during World War II. Thank you very much.
Any further questions? Councilmember Miller, please.
You have a quick question. You mentioned that the code changed from a prescriptive code to a performance-based code. What does that mean?
Well, there are two different, prescriptive is typically what's prescribed in the code, that it's like a typical type V construction for layman's construction. That tells you exactly what you need to do in terms of the wall bracing, the sheer wall, how to attach components of this. It's also included the engineering provisions because the Structure Engineer Association got involved, and they added some items because of every three years, the building industry learns more about more structural items, what's new, what's been built, what's, are the latest technology. So they added that to it. And then typically, California, the state of California goes with the amendments or recommendation by the Structure Engineer Association, South of California. And they incorporate those amendments in there. And so basically, for one and two, one and two-family buildings, small projects, you have a prescriptive area in the code that you can use. And then also, in a more complicated area, things like if you have large openings or more than two stories, you need to have the engineered portion of the code.
So the performance base is the engineered portion of the code?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Mr. Olivera? No? Do I hear anybody wants to move the action?
Any public comments, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, that's right, public comments. Moving along.
No public comments. No public comments.
I didn't think so. Okay, thank you.
I would be pleased to move the recommended act.
I'll second it. Okay, it's been regularly moved and seconded. Please cast your vote. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to unfinished business, item number 11, staff report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the last council meeting, we brought forth the resolution for your consideration to provide the Open Pace Energy Efficiency Financing Program to our residents. It's a state program. Last, the last council meeting, we did a full presentation. We were asked to lay it over to this meeting because there was some information received late, particularly from the Orange County Association of Realtors. We have incorporated their communications into this document as well as the state, the JPA, Joint Powers Authority, that we're proposing to, for you to pass a resolution to allow them to do business in town, if you will, to provide these financing options. They provided some responses, that's attachment E. We did provide all the communications that we've received to date as of the production of this staff report last Thursday. And then subsequent to that, the city clerk has passed out additional communications you have received. So we stand ready to answer any questions regarding the program.
Any questions from council members? Okay, now at this time, so we'll move on to public comments. Okay, we have Jeremy Hutman first, Michael McKinney, and then Aaron McKeeon.
Good evening, Mayor Tomlinson and city council members. I am the Regional Pace Director for New Financial. We administer California First, one of CSCDA's Open Pace programs. The state of California has spent hundreds of millions of taxpayer and utility ratepayer dollars creating government or utility-run efficiency programs that are cumbersome and have had mixed results. Pace has turned that approach on its head, Pace has turned that approach on its head, and we now have a popular and successful program that helps property owners reduce their energy bills and uses 100% private funding. By leveraging private companies and capital, Pace programs have achieved what we all hope for, a voluntary, large-scale, well-run, community benefit program at no cost to taxpayers or ratepayers. Over 100,000 property owners in California have used Pace to finance upgrades. Unexpectedly, realtors have emerged as a major opposition group to Pace. You will hear from them tonight. This is because Pace includes an assessment on the property and adds another step to the sale or refinance process. Throughout most of the state, we have coordinated with realtor associations to train their agents and provide them with ongoing resources. As with all parts of a home sale, when an agent is well-informed, they can provide useful services to their clients. Ocar has chosen not to train their agents on Pace and rejected our outreach offers. They have instead opted to fight Pace, and this has led to a negative feedback loop. Realtors in Orange County run into issues that have solutions. They would have known about the solutions if Ocar had accepted our training offers. Their sale is unnecessarily complicated, and then they want to fight Pace even more. Pace programs have rapidly evolved. There are new legislated disclosures that were sponsored by the California Association of Realtors and supported by the Pace industry. These disclosures are similar to the mortgage industry's know-before-you-owe form and ensure property owners make informed decisions. Also, the Federal Housing Administration and the Veterans Administration now allow Pace on properties getting an FHA or VA loan. For Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac loans, we offer a subordination option so that loans go through as well. Realtors will be quick to say that Pace's super priority lien is an issue, but as I just said, there is a solution for every loan scenario, and we are happy to train local agents and give them ongoing updates, like we do in other parts of the state. Realtors also say that they are doing this as an effort to protect homeowners. If that was the case, they should be outraged that traditional financing programs offer loans on inefficient measures that are unpermitted and done by unlicensed contractors. Traditional loan programs also allow payments to go out before the work is even complete. Realtors should be happy that Pace is the only program with protections against all of that. We require and verify that all work is permitted and all contractors are licensed, bonded, and insured. Pace is not a silver bullet, but it is the best choice for many homeowners and many business owners. No financing program provides all the solutions for every scenario. A community is best served when property owners can choose between more rather than fewer options. We hope that you will vote to enable Open Pace and allow property owners to make their own informed decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael McKinney, please.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I thought it might be helpful to start off with a little bit of a story that is of personal nature regarding Pace and some of the programs and how it is offered. It is an option. It is an option for a homeowner. My wife and I happen to own our, my in-laws' home. If a banker were to take a look at the mortgage that we're carrying, it looks like we have about $800,000 in mortgage. Therefore, our lending capacity is nil. I own a business here in Orange County, and as you know, many of you who own a business, stated income probably will disqualify you from many, many lending options. Pace offers the ability for me to go in and upgrade that home before its sale, put new windows, new energy efficiency into that home in an attempt to upgrade the price. Otherwise, what I will have to do upon the sale of that home is to actually decrease the price, to offer basically a offset for the energy efficiency that needs to be done and the upgrades that need to be done. It's just an alternative. What the realtors are asking you to do is to protect me from me. Well, I don't need that protection. I researched this, I know what we want to do, I know how to put it into 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 play to the best of our ability. In this particular case, what I'm asking you to do is just authorize the program and move it forward. We're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. It's nice to see you again. So there's been a lot of, you know, I know that this has come before you a number of times, and again, my name is Erin McKean. I work with the Hero Property Advisors Division with Renovate America's Hero Program. Really, all that means is that I help educate the real estate community on this form of financing. So, you know, I have spoken at numerous associations across the entire state, all the way from Northern California down into the San Diego area. My primary territory, as I mentioned last month, is Orange County. I have developed a great relationship with the Pacific West Association of Realtors, being that the majority of our assessments have taken place in the northern part of Orange County. But I have also done some some education with the Orange County Association of Realtors, but primarily at a brokerage level because of Orange County Association of Realtors' current stance with the Pace financing and Pace providers like the Hero Program. At the end of the day, the Hero Program alone has funded more than 80,000 assessments across the entire state of California. We've helped create, our company alone has helped create over 16,400 jobs in the state of California with an economic stimulus of more than $3.3 billion. Just to kind of break it down for the purposes of Orange County, we've done over 4,700 of the assessments in the in the county. We've created over 1,000 jobs in Orange County. It's created an economic stimulus of over $200 million in the county. So regardless of how the Orange County Association of Realtors feels about this, the end of the day, this is an option that people are utilizing, this is an option that people need available to them, this is an option that people want available to them. Companies like Renovate America with our Hero Program, as I mentioned, we have an entire division that's committed to helping educate the real estate community. Since June, we have educated over 2,000 real estate agents between San Bernardino, Riverside, and Orange County alone. We have assisted with over 1,500 real estate transactions since June. We send out a survey at the end of, at the close of every escrow, and to my knowledge, nearly every Realtor has said that they would be comfortable taking on a listing with the Hero Assessment attached, knowing that they have these resources available. So while I ask that you move forward with with Renew Financial's Open Pace, I also ask that and kindly request that you put the Hero Program on agenda at a future date. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Brent Nebian, followed by Gary McCready.
Mayor Tomlinson and honorable council members, my name is Brent Nebian with Y Green Energy Fund. I'm the manager of Desert Development and Government Relations for Y Green here in Southern California, and I'm also a homeowner in Elisa Viejo, a nearby city. So I come from a unique position on multiple stakeholders. I have been a real estate agent with Tarbell. I have been a sales manager in the in the residential home improvement industry for a number of years, Baringo and American Solar Direct. And I'm also a homeowner and now work with Y Green. So I just want to give you a brief overview of my perspective on that. I can understand real estate agents' view of adding complexity and possibly encumbrance in the refinance or sale. I understand, I understand that, I'm refining refining right now. So I would want, if that popped up, I'd want to know much about it. So if I was still practicing as a real estate agent, I would definitely find out as much about this as I possibly can and realize to turn it into a positive versus a negative to help me, you know, make more sales, because that's part of my living. As a sales manager in the solar contracting industry, the the salesmen and saleswomen are working also like this real estate in the commission environment. So they're wanting every option they can to make sales and, you know, provide an income from themselves and their family. So the sale of residential and commercial energy improvements put a lot of people to work after those sales are made as well. The third thing, Y Green and the paint industry, what it has done is allowed the commercial and residential contracting industry to take more of a holistic view of energy improvements. Why? Because you can do multiple measures, solar roofing, HVAC together under one element. So there is a sort of a move towards not just going and selling as much solar as you can to somebody or doing your windows, but, you know, doing an assessment for what they really need and doing a holistic view view approach on it. Last thing, as a homeowner, as a homeowner, it's really about choice and options. And I would want, you know, I live in Elisa Viejo, and I have friends in Dana Point. If I lived in Dana Point and was reversed, I'd want to know why this was available to me, why it was not available to me and is available to my, you know, friend in Elisa Viejo. So it really comes down to my responsibility to determine, you know, how to leverage my own personal credit, or, you know, in this case with Pace, to leverage my own property. So I urge council to put that into the hands of your constituents here in Dana Point. I believe this is going to continue to grow, so you're probably going to have more outreach from your community to add this, you know, at a future date, and then also, you know, add Y Green at a future date so we can add more choice and options and competition in the in the here in the city. So I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. McCready. I don't see him in chambers anymore. Finally pronounced his name right, and he's not here. That concludes public comments. Questions from council members? Shuffle?
Just just one of Mr. Kilabru. You've been a supporter of this program recently because you feel that appropriate safeguards have been built into the process that should mitigate or substantially mitigate and hopefully eliminate some of the concerns that have been discussed by speakers last meeting and this meeting?
That's correct, and to even put it in perspective, I've been involved in looking at this program since, I believe, 2008, 2009. I was not a big supporter of it. I've I've been briefing every new council member that comes along that hears the sales pitches from the administrators of these programs, you know, dating back to when I first started looking at it. I worked at the county level, the county was considering creating a joint powers authority to implement the program, and we concluded as a committee way back then that we weren't comfortable with, you know, it being such an immature industry at the time with a lot of what we thought were issues. Roll forward, and over the last few years, incrementally, they've improved the programs, the oversight, the state laws that have been put in place, you know, kind of rules the road that they have to follow. Is it where I think it needs to be eventually? No, I think there's still some more improvements, but I think what they've done to date is gone far enough along that I'm, you know, providing this to you to say it's, you know, for consideration of whether or not you want to put it in Dana Point, but to date, I've not been supportive of it until recent.
So I appreciate the explanation, and council will consider it. Does it come with your recommendation?
Yes, even though I know that there might be some philosophical differences on the city council, again, I'm looking at this as it's a state program. I think it's safe enough to put our name on it, that it's not going to make us look bad if things, if there's failures in the system. And you can go back and just Google some of the programs, and you'll come up with a laundry list of articles and issues from, you know, contractors and lending disclosures, and you go on down the list. But what I'm recommending is for you to consider this program, that's through the CSCDA Joint Powers Authority, which we are already a member of, and we've been observing them and their work at the state level, the largest JPA, I believe, in the state, and they're confident, and I'm confident that they're managing the program.
And as a member of the JPA, we would have input as time goes by if we considered issues to be important to our residents, to potential customers out there, and could hopefully work those, or at least have some feedback into those issues.
We would be one of hundreds of voices, but what we all, what the council always have is the ability to walk.
Right.
At any time by adopting another resolution.
Okay, thank you.
And stop participating.
Councilmember Olivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions. I heard it during the presentation, but how does Pace and Hero merge, or is one the umbrella and one the implementer?
Open Pace is the state program. Within that, the, I don't know if there's more than three, but you've got the three entities, well, you've got a mixture of entities represented here. You've got a joint powers authority that spoke, I believe two of them, and you've got two administrators or supporters of the administrators. So there's an umbrella, there's the state law, there's an umbrella organization that's a joint powers authority. I believe there's three of them that provide the Open Pace program, and they hire administrators. So Hero is an administrator of, I believe, the Western Cog, it's the one out of Riverside County. The gentleman, Mr. Hutman, that spoke earlier, he's one of the administrators that's been contracted with CSCDA, the California Statewide Communities Development Authority, the one that we're a member of. And then Y Green is another one of the administrators.
And my second question is, is the state delegating this to the cities? Why doesn't the state just do this?
The way the state established it was, the cities could adopt a resolution to participate. So the state does not have the program. The state has some responsibilities with the program, and I know they provide some financial backing in case there's defaults, which I don't believe that money's coming into play. I could be wrong, I'm sure there's several gentlemen here that could speak to that, but the way the state law was set up was to allow cities to participate, and the way cities have been participating is through these JPAs that they join.
Okay, I do understand what you said.
And I'll open this up to either Michael or Mr. Hutman to speak if I misspoke on anything here.
Then your earlier comment that we are putting our name on it.
By adopting a resolution, you would be allowing them to operate in Dana Point. And the administrators to market their their program to individual property owners, it'll be up to the individual property owners to decide whether or not they want to participate. But again, they can't operate in Dana Point offering the Open Pace program without the city's authorization.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have a couple of questions. Maybe one of the speakers can answer it for me. Who's the regulatory agency that oversees your activities? Please say your name again for the record.
Sure, my name is Jeremy Hutman, the Regional Pace Director for California First, one of the administrators in the Open Pace program. So we have, we have several layers of oversight in the state. At the at the highest level, the California Alternative Energy and Advanced Transportation Financing Authority, or CAETFLA, it's a long unfortunate acronym, but but that's the agency in the California Treasury that that oversees our underwriting practices. So they they run a statewide loss reserve program, and and in order to participate in that, which which we do, all the Open Pace providers do, they they oversee our our underwriting standards. Then also at the state level, the the California Statewide Communities Development Authority, the the Joint Powers Authority that sponsors our program, which was created as basically a part of the League of California Cities and the State Association of Counties. So this is the largest joint powers authority in the state. They have a comprehensive consumer protection policy, and what they do is they verify that we we meet all of the criteria within this consumer protection policy, and it's the strongest, the strongest policy in the Pace industry. Then at the the local level, like what Mr. Kilabru was talking about, is that cities have the ability to opt in and opt out of this program. So that gives the ultimate control to to cities. So this is, although it's a statewide program that's passed through state legislation, you have the the ability to join the program and at the same time opt out through passing a resolution either way.
Can you tell me what the origination fee is and how much you guys charge and what's that for?
Oh, sure. So we have an origination fee of approximately 6.5%, and that is the, that's the initial closing fee, but that is is wrapped into the financing, and it it's paid over the course of the term, whichever term the property owner.
So the services you guys provide is cost 6.5% to the consumers?
That's correct, yeah. And and like I said, all this is disclosed upfront, so property owners have the ability to see it, and this was part of AB 2693, the the know-before-you-owe measure.
Now, the subordination issue, describe that to me. I've heard that it's possibly only subordinated for the part that's in default on the loan or the package. Is that, can the entire thing be subordinated to?
Yeah, and that's what we do. So the, there are three different agencies in Washington DC that either insure or back mortgages. It's the Federal Housing Administration, the Veterans Administration, and the Federal Housing Finance Agency. Two of those, two of the three have reviewed Pace and have issued guidance that Pace is fine, there's no issues with Pace being a senior lien on the property. With FHFA, which is the overseer of Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, they do have a concern with Pace taking senior priority over a, over a traditional mortgage. So what we do in that case during a sale or a refinance, if a property owner is getting any pushback from the lender because of FHFA's guidance, then we will contractually subordinate the the Pace assessment, basically giving up all of our rights that would come with the senior position. And since that has been in place, it goes through, whenever there's a a question that comes up, we'll happily subordinate, and it's allowed all the projects to go through.
And that that was one of the more recent major changes as well.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just piggybacking on what you just said, why do you not subordinate immediately? Why do you wait until there's a question about refi or sale? Why don't you just automatically subordinate? Why do we have to go through this process?
Sure, that's a great question. That has come up several times. So the subordination only comes into effect, there's a small percentage of projects that have needed the subordination. For instance, we have over 104,000 PACE projects out in the marketplace right now, property owners that have gone through this. Somewhere around 1 percent of them have needed the subordination option.
So only 1 percent of the people sell their houses after they put this in?
No, that's just where we have so far. So the reason that we don't subordinate initially is because it keeps the interest rates lower than they would be if it started out in a senior, or a subordinate position, and so that gives the benefit to all property owners. And even after they subordinate later on in the process, the interest rate doesn't go up. It still stays at that same rate for them.
Okay. A couple more questions for you. That was just one that came up. This, so when you qualify somebody for a PACE loan, do you look and see whether they have the ability to pay that loan, or just if there's enough equity in the house to cover that loan?
So this is, it is an equity-based finance, and we make sure that they do have at least 10 percent equity in the property before they qualify, and then we also make sure that they're not underwater afterwards. The measures that we finance...
Do you not take a look at what that does to their taxes, and are they, do they have the ability to make their payments after? I mean, this could be a 10 percent increase, or a 10 percent interest rate on this, on this improvement that rolls onto their taxes, and there's some of these people that just aren't going to be able to pay this, but they don't realize that upfront. So how do you deal with that?
Oh, sure. So we do a couple of different things. The statewide underwriting standards, we make sure that they're current on their property taxes and on their mortgage payments. And then also, just the basic structure of this program is, we only finance measures that lead to reduced energy bills and reduced water bills. So that increases their ability to service the financing for this.
You know, okay, I'll come back to that. That's a big issue for me, quite frankly, because it sounds like we're getting back into the predatory lending that went on that caused the crash in '08. But anyway, so let's come back to that.
Okay.
But if we, we're already a member of CSCDA, I understand that, but if we pass this resolution tonight, we are actually, oh, you know, I don't know what the right word for is, we don't cede it, but we allow them the ability to use our tax levying authority, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So we're actually turning over our ability to levy taxes to another agency?
So that's pretty standard for CSCDA and this joint powers authority, what it allows communities to take advantage of. The reason it was created in the first place was it allows local communities to take advantage of a statewide and very large authority to access financing at a lower rate. So CSCDA, on behalf of its 400-plus member agencies, which Dana Point is a part of, has financed over $50 billion worth of community improvement projects using this levying, tax levying authority to help improve the communities that are members. And so this is another, another program along those same lines, where you are, you're taking advantage of CSCDA's tax levying ability to access a community benefit program that ultimately benefits, obviously benefits property owners in your community.
So, okay, I'm not sure I'm okay with that. I mean, that's something that's very, very, you know, it's kind of sacred to a city to have that ability. Nobody else has it. I mean, other state agencies have it. But to turn that over to another agency, I think is a little bit dangerous. But getting back to, you also mentioned that there is government, there's a government fund in place that if there's a default on one of these loans, that the government covers that. Is that true?
So what the, what the state did when PACE was initially getting started, there was the concern from FHFA or Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, because of the senior position of the PACE lien, if there was a default at any point, the lender, the owner of that first deed of trust, would lose out to whatever the assessment was from PACE. So they created, the state had already set aside the money for this loss reserve program. So that money is already there.
So it's a government fund, though? I mean, it's taxpayer money that we put into a fund.
Yeah, and that's...
If there's a default, we're using taxpayer money to pay a private entity for an improvement in a private residence?
Sure. So the money, it goes, it doesn't go to the PACE programs. It goes, it goes to whatever lender there is out there. But this program has been in place for over two years now, and no one has taken it, no one has needed to use it. So it was placed as a safeguard to, in case there were any issues. Those issues don't exist now, and especially the fact that we're subordinating, the lender is no longer at risk because PACE is seen.
Okay. There was one other comment that was made here tonight that kind of concerned me, and I can't remember who's the second speaker. He's sitting in the back there. He stated that, and I understand the declared earnings or stated earnings issue that you brought up.
Correct.
That allows you to do this improvement without...
It's actually the equity and the property.
It's actually, that was interesting to me, because what you basically told me, and this is how I understood it, is without this, this program, you would have to reduce the price of that house by whatever the improvement is. Hold on, just let me get there. But by allowing this program, you could then do the improvement, increase the price of your house, put it onto the tax rule, and then sell the home and get the improvement upgrade, but also put the cost onto the, that sounds like double dipping to me.
Likely what you would do in that case is you'd just pay it off early. You would pay it off out of the proceeds of the house.
Well, but what I'm saying is, I mean, but, you know, does the, does the buyer know that? I mean...
Yes, that would all be stated upfront and disclosed to the buyer as part that there was a PACE lien on there.
That sounds a little fishy to me. I mean, that sounds like you're double dipping on the buyers to get that. So, I mean, that's all I brought. I just, when you said that, that didn't sound right to me, but, sure.
Oh, sure. If I could speak to that, yeah, there was that concern about double dipping, and that's why the actual National Appraisal Institute has become more heavily involved in PACE. What they're trying to do is train all of their appraisers to identify when there is a PACE assessment on the property, and that that will reduce the cost of the value of the property because there is that PACE assessment attached to it. So there's a way to, there's a way to balance things out. The improvements, the improvements that are on the property increase the value of the property, whereas the remaining PACE lien will slightly reduce the amount, or the value of the property, evening things out for the prospective buyer. The whole idea for PACE, and the reason that it's so successful, is that it's allowing whoever is enjoying the benefits of those improvements will be the one that's actually paying for it. And this is why PACE is also so successful, is it's encouraging property owners who would otherwise, if they're only going to live in their house for five more years, basically what they do is they'll go for the least expensive, the lowest-cost upgrade, and they'll probably get an inefficient air conditioner, they'll get, you know, cheap windows, they'll do things that really don't benefit them. They're not going to put solar on their house because they may move in the next five to 10 years, yet this benefit will last for 15 to 20 years. So this is encouraging property owners to pay more, which will ultimately benefit them and the community, because they're going to be getting higher, higher quality, more efficient features on their property, and then when the new buyer comes in, they can just assume the payments, knowing that they're getting a better property, one that has, one that has more efficient features on it. And this is, this is happening now throughout the state. It was an idea that PACE had, and it's really starting, it's really proven itself out.
So, but we're saying this is about a 10 percent interest rate on this improvement?
I mean, it depends. So...
I mean, just going by what was published, I mean, there's a range, of course.
Yeah, so it ranges five to 25 years, and it starts at about 675, and then goes up to 839, plus the closing cost.
But then you add on the origination fee, too, right?
Well, that's why I said, plus the closing cost, to get to an APR.
Fifteen.
Yeah. No, no, no. It's, the APR, the APR is generally between nine and 10 percent.
Okay, so I'm looking at nine to 10 percent. Interest rates right now are three. I mean, why wouldn't I just go and get a conventional loan to do this? I don't have to carry, I don't have to relinquish my taxing authority to another agency. I don't have to worry about all of, all of these other issues we're going to have down the road with, with subordinating and all these other, why would I do this? I mean, quite frankly, I've looked through my packet. I haven't had anybody in Dana Point, other than the three letters that were in this packet, say, "We think this is a good thing for our community." I mean, I guess I'm starting with my, getting to my closing statement. There hasn't been a single thing said here tonight that would convince me this is a good thing for Dana Point. Not one. I mean, I, everything, it's, it's all, the only people that are interested in this are the people that make money off this program. I mean, so you're here tonight. I just, I just don't think I can support this. I'm going to say that right now. After everything I've heard here, this, it feels like a predatory loan to me. Maybe, you know, I'm hoping that the residents of Dana Point are smart enough to realize that and wouldn't engage in this anyway, but I don't want to be the guy to put my name on it and let this happen to our homeowners. So that's all I have to say about it. Thanks.
Can I just talk about the...
Hold on.
Any further questions, councilmembers?
Mayor Portem, Victor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have to say, I had some questions, but I think they were asked and answered already. So let me just turn to Mr. Kilabru. You had, it seemed to be sort of, only because you were forced to, sort of hesitantly recommended this Open PACE program. Is that correct?
And in context, it's, you know, buyer beware. I said that in my presentation two weeks ago, that it's another option. It's got different features than you might find from a traditional lending that are mentioned in the packets that include a lot quicker financing, pre-qualified contractors in the program. I mean, I'll be open, and I've been open with every one of these folks since I've been listening to them for the last seven, eight years, that have been pitching the program. It's not something I would do. You know, if, I don't know what kind of a situation I'd have to get into that I would go out for a nine or 10 percent loan for a home improvement, because I would be questioning, you know, given my financial background, why I would be doing that. But it is an option. It's another option, and it's buyer beware. Now that they have the disclosures in place that I had issues that they weren't disclosing in the past, now that the information they're providing in their marketing materials and their websites is not misleading, and what I, with what I considered initially was misleading information with the consumer protections that were recently put in place with the, in the last year here, with the subordination options that they provide under, that they've been able to get from the investors that the, if you want to, the sophisticated investors that buy the bonds will allow for the subordination now after the fact, where typically, if you went out on a financing, you're not going to be able to get that after the fact. They're, they're paying a lower, they're getting a lower interest rate because the credit's better with that superior lien they don't have anymore. So, yes. What I'm saying is, buyer beware. It's another option for a program. Personally, it's not something I would use.
Let me just try to sum up my understanding then of your answer then. It's, the consumer protections were a big issue to you. Those were addressed in AB 2693, I suppose. So in other words, and I did hear you mention the subordination issue, which I guess you could classify as substantive, but basically, there were problems with the program, but there were also problems with the disclosures and protections for the consumers. So all they've really done, they haven't fixed the problem with the program so much as simply transferred the responsibility, saying, "Well, we didn't used to reveal this to you. Now we do reveal this to you, consumers. So if you buy this product, it's on you."
Yes, and it goes back to councilmember Miller, and I said it at our last, during my presentation. The one thing that still bothers me the most about these programs, other than the cost, but again, there's the buyer beware, as long as there's disclosure. The one thing that still bothers me about this program is that it's, the qualification of a participant is based on how much equity they have in their house, and there's not a hard look at what they can afford to pay.
That was actually my next question, so, thank you very much. Any further questions? Seeing none. Is there a motion out there?
I'm going to make a motion to deny the recommended action, the resolution of the city council of the city of Dana Point, California consenting to the inclusion of properties within the territory of the city of Dana Point and the CSCDA Open PACE programs authorizing the California Statewide Communities Development Authority to accept applications from property owners, conduct contractual assessment proceedings, and levy contractual assessments within the territory of the city of Dana Point and authorizing in Dana Point. Recommended deny.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. I think the comments about some of the problems with this program, and I think this is not a good thing for Dana Point. So, any further comments? If not, we'll cast our votes. Please cast your vote.
But you vote this to deny, right?
Correct.
All right.
Okay. We have a four to one vote with councilmember Olivera dissenting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city's been approached by the Dana Point Community Cycling Foundation to be a partner for the Dana Point Grand Prix of Cycling for a one-day event on April 30th of 2017. For the past 10 years, the city's partnered with the foundation to produce the annual race that shuts down Del Prado in the Santa Clara Street neighborhood for the event. They host amateur and professional bike racing, as well as a well-attended, really fun kids' bike race. The foundation reports recently that over the, over the life of their event, they've donated about $150,000 to charities. The event attracts bike participants upwards of, I believe, 700 to 800 of them, and the spectator attendance over the years has varied. But over the past three years, it's been noticed that the spectator attendance has dipped significantly. An informal poll of many of the city staff that work not only the day of the event, but the weeks and the months leading up to the event, in our partnership with the foundation, is that honestly, the bike racers absolutely appreciate the professionalism with which the event is run. Almost to a person, though, staff is asking me, and we've expressed concerns to the foundation, they're questioning the amount of the city effort that's expended, the overall cost, and because there are so few spectators, you know, the common theme is that if, if there were large crowds of enthusiastic community supporters, you know, overall, the staff that's committed to this event over the years would love to keep working it, but, you know, they've kind of put, they pushed it up, up here to say, you know, this is something we should really be doing when the community at large isn't coming out and supporting it. Feedback from the business community has been mixed as well, as we've heard that merchants affected by the race, particularly those on race day, would prefer not to have the race, and they even went further that if there were a race, to at least limit the impact to a one-day event as opposed to what we did last year, or earlier this year, which was a two-day event. We did receive some letters of support that are included in the council packet, those that we got through last Thursday, and then we got a couple today from a couple of the restaurants, letters of support that are included in today's handouts. Several merchants in the Lander District have shared that there are other events that are less intrusive and more effective at promoting business than the bike race has done to date, and have expressed support for other events that do shut down the, do impact the street and at times shut it down, including the Art Walk, the car shows that have started down there. In addition, and based on feedback from our resort community, there has been no significant increase in occupancy over the years. They do see some, some participants in the event stay, but it's not a huge driver of business for the resorts. The city does spend out of pocket, or did this past year, about $125,000 cash for a variety of the line items that are listed in the, we listed them in the staff report, plus another $50,000 worth of salaried staff time, so not the hourly staff time, but the salary. The hourly staff time, it was in the $125,000. More recent, we learned that the foundation is coming to the table with, for the 2017 race with a new $100,000 sponsor that is also reported to be committed for the next three years. We've, like I said, we've received letters of support. They were attached to the report. What we're doing is we're seeking input from the council on the extent of any continued partnership and/or sponsorship that the city might have with the foundation for this upcoming 2017 event. And I know there's a host of interested parties that want to speak here. I know Stephen Weinberg, former mayor and council member, who's been very active in the, not only the formation of the, of the foundation, but in helping it operate each year. I didn't get a chance to mention it to you. You asked me earlier today if you could have some extended period of time to present, and we'll just, we'll leave it to you. Available to answer questions and listen to their, to their testimony as well, but what we are seeking is council input on, on how you might want us to do it. But what we are seeking is council input on, on how you might want us to move forward.
Any questions from council this time? Schoeffel?
Yeah, just, Mike, I'm looking at the 2016 city-paid event costs. It says total expenses 2016, 125, 357. Not included in the above number is over $51,000 of salaried city staff cost, but I guess that $51,000 figure would have been expended in any event. It just...
Correct. Even if the, if the event weren't done next year, the city still incurred the $51,000, but what we do gain back is, you know, productivity time that in addition to the, you know, 50, 60, whatever hour work weeks we got, we have them working as salaried staff. They don't have to put in the, that extra time. They can focus it on, on other core responsibilities.
So if I'm just looking at 125, 357, is that typical of what the city spends each year on this event? Ballpark?
It was typical. We, we ratcheted back a little bit for a few years. This last year, we went, they tried a two-day event that put some additional costs in here. And I believe there's a, there's a footnote somewhere in here that, there's a comment that if they go back to a one-year event, or one-day event, which they're recommending, there'd be about $15,000 to $20,000 below the 125. And obvious, and likely less than the $51,000 on the salaried staff time, because I know there was, there was a, a race, a foot race that was put into, to the mix on this that...
So they could cut it 10% or more, something like that. And how many years has the city been paying this?
We've been involved for 10 years, and if the form of payment has adjusted, I don't believe we made the sponsorship dollar contribution. In the early years, that came in the, in the latter years, I think the last five years, maybe, that we've been making the 20 to $25,000 contribution in addition to the, the direct contracts we do to manage various pieces of the event.
So, so if the new sponsor that's come along for the foundation kicks in $100,000, and the city decided to, say, sponsor another $20,000, $25,000, and the work was outsourced to independent contractors with the, with the foundation serving as the, serving as the sort of general contractor, if you will, for the event, I think that's what I see as the recommended staff action here. Does that, does that work?
That's, that would be a recommended staff action without the, sitting down with the foundation and going over whether they think they can handle it and what, who they would have to get to replace all the city staff that are taking, you know, taking responsibilities for parts of the...
And I understand that.
I don't know what it would cost them to go out to contract for a lot of stuff, and that would be something, you know, we'd have to get, you know, their input on.
Okay. That was it. That was it. Thanks.
I have a question on page 10, Mr. Kilabru. Looks like they have a potential for extra, more slotted sponsorships. How would that play in the equation if some of these sponsorships were filled?
I've seen a lot of pro formas for events that have been pitched, and, you know, I know, I believe Mr. Weinberg is ready to show us $100,000 check, but with the rest of those. I guess what I'm saying is it'd be really nice to have all those sponsorships. To what degree we could rely on them, looking at past year's events, you know, that's why we, we included the history in here from '16 to show you what level of support they'd received in the past. There's a, there's definitely, I think, some stretch goals in here for fundraising. Anyway, it would be nice to have all that. It would make it a lot easier to go from where we're at to where we might want to be.
Any further questions from council members? Okay, we'll move to public comments. Adam Clark?
Followed by Gail Andler.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilpersons. My name is Roger Worthington. I live in Dana Point, and I love this town, and I love this council, and I love this city, and I'm so proud to be a member of this town that puts its name and its resources behind great events, not just the Dana Point Grand Prix, but many events. This is a, we, the city has invested 10 years of time and resources, and that, the value of that investment is, is manifest. We are the number-one bike race in America. We have the best course in America. We invite racers from all over the country, even international, from Canada, Mexico, Europe, Australia. We have the number-one kids' race in America. I mean, if you've been there, you've seen it, the joy, the laughter, the adrenaline, the parents, they love that event. We love that event. This, this last year, we brought in a special needs event with these adaptive trikes and tears of joy, tears of joy to see those kids on a bike racing in downtown Dana Point in the beautiful Llaner District, the district that this town has put its name on. You put your money behind it. We are so proud to be the agent between the city and the rest of the world. We want people to come to our city. We love our town. We want everyone to love it. We have the best course in America, and the kids' races is number one. 10,000 spectators come on average each year. We've raised $150,000 in charity. We give to the Boys and Girls Club of Capistrano. We give money to the Fifth Marine Regiment Support Group. That's a beautiful thing! You're helping us do that. That's legacy stuff. That's stuff that gets people fired up about coming to these meetings and being part of this great city. Yes, we have read the memo. It's a beautiful report, and I, I'm a businessman. I employ over 160 people, three businesses. I take net profit, I take return on investment very seriously. I've looked at this. We are prepared to sit down with you, the Dana Point Community Cycling Foundation, and go line by line. The, the costs that we can control, that can negotiate, we will negotiate. That's what I love to do, and I will do it, we will do it. We are so proud that we, because of what you guys have done, what this city has done, investing in this bike race, bringing in racers from all over the world, being the, the lead-up race to the Amgen Tour of California, which is an international event. Because of that, we were able to secure $100,000 in sponsorship from an international, very reputable, $7 billion company. Why they do it? Because they see this as a first-class event. They've seen what we've done. They've seen that we're always adaptive and willing to change. This year, we want to consolidate all events into one day, and it's not just cycling. It's running, it's walking, it's strolling, it's getting kids out in the morning. We have a, a fun run. It's fun, but it's also fun to win. They're going crazy, the kids, the old folks. Can I talk longer, please? I came all the way for this.
Go ahead, Roger.
As long as you don't let Stephen talk.
I appreciate that. Because I'm just, I'm not just getting warmed up. That'll scare the heck out of you. By the way, I appreciate your stamina. You're all very fit, but I'm sure you all own and ride bikes regularly. This is fun for the entire, but go back to Kingston, Kingston HyperX Gaming. They invest in technology, and they see the kids, and they see the value, and they see this is a first-class event that they want to get behind. The good news is, we've got help from, coming from, from outside. Finally, we're getting that help because of your investment. Now's not the time to walk away. Now's the time to get behind it. We've got Kingston, they want to do a three-year deal, but we got to get past this first year. Yes, $100,000 bucks, but we want to stretch it out. We want to stretch it out so that we can continue to offer these new events, the fun ride, the kids' ride. We've got the Killer Cove 5K Challenge on Sunday morning. Look at, who doesn't love running up a 25% grade and over with the beautiful ocean and the heart about to explode? I mean, that's what we live for, right? That's excitement, adrenaline, endorphins. I love it. We've got the, the 1K Family Run and Walk that morning as well. This isn't just bike racing. This is getting kids off the couch onto the streets, whether as volunteers or as participants or as bike racers. 200 volunteers a year. That's the beautiful thing. That goes beyond just promoting sports and recreation and bikes as a mode of transportation. That's getting kids at a young age to invest in their community. That's what, you're leaders. That's what you do. You want kids to lead.
All right, Mr. Worthington, I think we've gotten your point. So, thank you. Go ahead. One more quickly.
We're on target. We want to reduce the budget, the 2016 budget by 40% to speak to your point. Look, you have given us a nest, a beautiful nest in a beautiful town. You've taught us how to put on a first-class facility. You fed us and nurtured us. Now we're ready to fly. We're bringing in more money. We're bringing in more people. You have our commitment. We'll make this the best event in this city that you'll all be proud of. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate your enthusiasm, sir. All right. Final speaker this evening is Gail Andler.
Good luck following that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmember. It is a tough act to follow. I don't come here as a person who is a cycling enthusiast. I have no association with the world of cycling, but I'm a 28-year Dana Point resident. I love this community, and my husband and I volunteered for it because we thought, what a great opportunity to get out there and to expose other people to our city and all that it has to offer. So we volunteered last year, and we had a blast, and we've attended it other years. And I have to tell you that lots of cities have art walks. Lots of cities have things having to do with cars. I think that the City of Dana Point really shines with an event like this because you see the beautiful harbor, you see the geography. It helps sell the image of health and wholesomeness. It's a great family event. I think that it does a lot of things to promote our community that are unique. I can't speak to the fiscal aspects of it, but I can tell you that Ms. Luna would probably be able to tell you too. I'm not frivolous when it comes to tax dollars or anybody else's money nor my own. So I can't speak to whether or not the budget can be tightened up and anything else that can be done with it, but I'm encouraging you to please take a look at other ways to save this if it does become a fiscal issue. My husband, who's here and wouldn't speak, but he volunteered with me, and I have to tell you, it's one of the best showcases for our community. So I am asking you, I'm urging you to really keep, keep our bike race and keep this as an event that can bring people in, showcase our community, as well as providing the residents and the families here with fun, healthy, good, creative way to participate in our community, in addition to all the good work that's done through the support of the charities. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Adam Clark? Who provided the handout this evening that we just got a few minutes ago?
Roger.
Mr. Worthington? Okay.
Stephen.
Stephen. Mr. Weinberg, thank you. All right, I'll close the public comment portion of this agenda item. Okay.
Question. Mr. Worthington, just a quick question. You stated you have a $100,000 sponsor. Is that annually, or is that for three years?
Adam Clark?
Yes, please.
We have $100,000 this year. That's our first crack. They are, we're negotiating with them now. They want to see how we do. It's this grand experiment. We hope with the success, we anticipate to secure another second and third year at the same level. But, one more thing. We just getting, we're getting started. We're now talking to people about more sponsorship money. We're trying to cover that gaps.
Okay. All right. I got you. Thanks. I was confused. I thought you said over three years. I'm like, well, that's only 33 for this year. Okay.
Good clarification.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, if not, I'll open it up for council discussion. Schoeffel?
Yeah, I'll start off. I like this event. It's, bicycle racing in, in this country has taken, gotten a bit of a black eye recently. I know some of the more famous bicycle racing municipalities are shunning participation in events like this. I remember when they used to line up to, to be tour stops in the Tour de California, things like that. We gave back, I guess, eight Tour de France titles, won by, at least initially won by Americans because of various compliance issues and, and just other things, seem to conspire to downgrade in the, in the spectator's mind, the bicycle racing in, in, in the U.S. Hopefully, that'll rebound at some point in time, and hopefully, we'll get some, some more spectators out to our event, which is a, which is a very fine event. What I'm looking at here tonight, and it's really your guys' decision, you know, going forward as to whether this is something you want to sponsor next year, but it looks to me that Roger's enthusiasm and the foundation's enthusiasm, everybody's enthusiasm has paid off. He found a sponsor willing to underwrite the vast majority of, of the cost of this thing, assuming, of course, Mr. Kilabru can, and his staff can become satisfied with the ability of contractors to provide the appropriate services for the appropriate amounts. That's what's supposed to happen with an event like this. Over time, you put the seed money in, you build the nest, as Roger said, you build it, hope they come. They certainly came a lot in the early years when I was mayor back in 2011. We had the cancer walk associated with it. You want a moving experience. That had to rank right above most of my, most moving experiences being on this council was, was, was leading that as part of the event. So my observation to you guys going forward is, it, it, it looks to me like the problem might have been solved with the, with the procurement of the sponsorship. It seems to me that that's the way these things should operate. The city could backfill with, with a, you know, with an amount of sponsorship that's a bit more in line with what, with what it typically contributes to ventures like this. Hopefully, they can get together, reduce the costs so that you can leverage every dollar out there. So it sounds to me like the, you know, with, with a major sponsor like that, you'll have the accountability for putting on the best possible event so that you'll get them to come back year after year after year, and hopefully with more sponsorship, sponsorship dollars. So best of luck. I guess we'll find out how that turns out.
I do have a few comments. I had the opportunity to speak to former mayor Weinberg this afternoon, and he's a little shy to speak today, but I'll, I'll share part of our conversation with you. We were talking about how to measure the attendance of these events and how many people get there, and he shared with me an important thing that a lot of people view this on the internet. I think there were some 70,000 hits that he portrayed to me that are worldwide. So what kind of advertising can you get from people watching on the internet saying, hey, you know, Dana Point's a great place, maybe I'll plan my next vacation there, or maybe I'll go to the bike race next year? So I, I think that's pretty important to the discussion here, that it's not only attendance that people are coming physically going to it, but it's the exposure on the internet worldwide that I think is important here. And I'm encouraged by the fact that, you know, there's parties here working to make this happen and, and cutting costs, and I'm a businessman, too, and I think that's great. If you can increase revenues through sponsorships and reduce costs, that's a good thing. Any further comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo Councilmember Schoeffel's comments about, you know, the city's been, you know, shouldering the majority of the burden from a cost standpoint, and, and I see with this new sponsorship, this is exactly what these types of events should be doing. We can, we can foster them for a little while, but they need to actually, at some point, get up on their own and, and, you know, support themselves. So I like the idea of these new sponsorships coming in. This is a, this is a really interesting event for the city. My kids have actually ridden in, in the kids' race. It was a lot of fun, and while we were watching the, the pro race, it was scary how fast those guys go down the street. And so it's, it's a great event for the city. I would like to see it continue. However, I, I do think we need to set up a timeline, if not this year, at some point in the future, where the foundation can actually take this event over from the city, and the city can just be a, one of the sponsors, like Mr. Schoeffel had commented. So that's what I'd like to say. I mean, I think this is a good event, and I'd like to see it continue if the foundation can stand on their own in the future.
Mr. Olivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll give you my pros and cons on this subject. As I was reading this when we got it last week, just before this, I read, and it may, our staff report may not be up to date, but I thought I read that the cycling schedule, national cycling schedule for next year was reduced from 20 to 15, and Dana Point did make the cut. I see the schedule that we have here has 21 rather than 20, so it doesn't make any difference. I think the, the national schedule has been cut, which kind of indicates to me that, are we getting bigger? We, the Cycling Foundation nationwide, are we getting bigger or are we getting smaller? Now, we had an interesting debate a couple of weeks ago about police services. Events like this, based on the mayor's comments, too, get attention worldwide. I'll just ask you to thank Boston. I'll just ask you to thank Boston, and isn't it nice that Dana Point can provide the police services for such an event? Last week, I also read that Laguna Beach, right now, their city council is trying to figure out why their police services are twice that of Dana Point. They have their own police services department. So, they're wondering, how come our police services costs are half? San Clemente, right now, is doing almost the same thing, only they're saying that they don't have any money. So, where are they going to get the money? And they need more hours to surveil their streets. Well, we just went through this a couple of weeks ago, and we added, we did some improvements, and we're adding more hours. Are these two things going to balance each other? Is it good we're doing the police services improvements in order to support events like this? Or are events like this of 100,000 plus, 200,000, is that going to be deficit spending? I don't know. So, some of the things that we have to think about when we want to do this. I used to be a cyclist when I was very, very, very young, and I really enjoyed it. Road racing was my forte. So, I know we've gotten better. The presentation, Roger, you got to get an award for that. I don't know, an Emmy or whatever, but Roger, you need to get something for that. Maybe I'll do up my own certificate and give it to you. But, your enthusiasm does help push this over for the tipping point. The idea of negotiation, the idea of, as been mentioned by two other councilmen, the idea of foundation getting stronger in the future. There's a lot of things that are here that we need to make a decision on, and I think we got enough of the tipping points to make this happen. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Olivera. Mayor Pretem Vicsoort.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to say, I will commend Mr. Kilbrug. I thought this was an excellent staff report. It really laid out the discussion that we're having, and it really presented this issue in a really balanced way. I thought it was, I thought it was an excellent staff report, so I wanted to commend you for that. And I want to say that, you know, I like this event, and I don't want to see it go away. And, you know, I want to commend, you know, Mayor Weinberg on ultimately making this reality. But, I do have to say, there were some things in the staff report that did concern me, and also, kind of the way I think about what the role of our government is, and, you know, is this a core function of our government? We did talk about police services, which, of course, is a core function of our government, which would be providing the services for an event like this. I'm not sure this falls into that category, so to kind of pick up on some of the other comments, you know, this is an event that's been around for 10 years, and eventually, I think, it's got to be able to stand on its own. This isn't something that we can continue to fund forever. So, there were a few things that concerned me in the staff report, you know, and if I read it correctly, really, we're not seeing a real benefit to our businesses down there, nor are hotels really benefiting. And really, I might be reading into this a little too much, but there seems to be a reason the $51,000 of salary city staff cost was included. I think it's taking a real, you know, it's damaging morale amongst our city employees, and that's something that we have to be aware of as well. So, you know, as far as what we're doing here tonight, like I said, I don't, I don't want to see it go away, but I do think we need to make some adjustments to what's going on. I do see that there is an alternative action suggested at the end to direct the staff to work with the foundation, to transition the foundation into being the lead agency, and reduce the staff and financial commitment to the city. That, to me, sounds like a good recommendation, kind of a good compromise going forward. So, with that, those would be my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any further comments? Any recommended action items from councilmembers? Any direction? Mr. Kilbrug, do you have enough direction from council comments and testimony this evening?
Yeah, and if I could just maybe recap, the direction I'm hearing is for us to work, the staff to work with the foundation to lessen the hit on the city's finances and also on staff time. And, you know, as we roll into the, what I'm going to add here is, as we roll into and out of the 2017 event, as we're producing the next two-year budget, what I would recommend is that we put some more meat on this discussion so that the council knows what we're going to be doing in the out years, in this, quote, "transition," and to what level or extent city's time commitment and financial commitment will be. So, if that's what I'm hearing, if that's the direction, then we're ready to go unless you have something else to add.
I'd like to add one more thing to that. I do want to see a timeline when the foundation will completely take over this event. I want to see how many years we're talking about here. Thanks.
And maybe if we could ask Mr. Worthington to go out and display as much enthusiasm as he did this evening here in the chambers to drum up more sponsorships, that'd be fabulous. So.
On it.
All right. Mr. Kilbrug, are you satisfied, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. No, I've lost my agenda. I think that concludes our, oh, no, we have a couple more this evening. Item number 13, Mr. Kilbrug, a staff report, please.
I'm going to defer to our city clerk to tee this one up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. Well, a couple of weeks ago, we got an email from the registrar voters, Neil Kelly, and he was stating that this year, due to some unforeseen circumstances that we typically don't have, he's not going to be able to give us our election certification results until the 6th, 7th, or 8th of December. Well, and the reasons that he gave was, you know, the election's on November 8th. That's usually at least four days later than it normally is. You've got the California law that allowed them to go to 30 days for certification instead of 28 days. Also, the vote-by-mail ballots can now mail their ballots on Election Day, and then if they don't sign it correctly, they actually have, like, eight days to correct it. And, of course, presidential years, you have a lot of, a lot more people involved in voting. So, he said, oh, how is this going to affect your election certification and your city council meetings? Well, all of the cities that have the same situation that we do, that either meet on the first or second Wednesday of the month, said, uh-oh, that doesn't work for us. We'll just move it to the second meeting in December. Well, we have a policy that says we don't have a second meeting in December because back in 2005, when we created the policy, which is City Council Policy 210, we had our meetings the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month, and it kind of conflicted with the holiday schedule. So, I brought this up so that you could look at the policy, see if you wanted to change it. I kind of did a redline version, if you want to consider that, or at least discuss it and see what you'd like to do. I'm available for questions.
Councilmember Schoffel, please.
Is there a public comment on this item?
No.
Okay. My comment is, if the policy reflects having a second meeting so that you can install newly-elected council members in those years when there's a tight certification schedule, I would certainly support that rather than, you know, waiting till January to put them in. I think that's a very small change in the policy and easily accommodated. And I believe part of the alternative that you gave the council to select.
Correct, and I do have a policy, a redline policy created, and that basically says exactly what you said.
Okay. I would support that, Mr. Mayor.
Any further comments? Mayor Pretem Vicsoort, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, I was just wondering, is this something we need to change the policy? I mean, can't we just see what happens if it's certified on time? We install them at the first meeting, and if it's not, we have another meeting and install them immediately after.
I think, as a practical matter, from staff's perspective, this is part of an effort to be sure that we're being open and transparent so that candidates who are coming up for election understand that there's a formal policy on how we deal with this and don't ever get the sense that, oh gee, you know, somebody who's on the council that, you know, maybe coming off the council is trying to play games. So, we want to have something in writing that's fair and objective that will apply in all cases, and, you know, certainly, we could just do it the way you suggested, but to have something out there in writing avoids unnecessary drama and controversy.
Plus, I really think new councilmembers that get elected want to invite their families, kind of a big deal, both of office, and if you wait until the last minute, how do you know when to invite them? It's kind of nice to know, you know, that when the meeting's going to be so that you're going to be there for installation and some, you know, nice pictures and all of that.
Why wouldn't, I've got a question. Why don't we just change it so, instead of having our first meeting on the first Tuesday in December? To overcome this, we just go to the second Tuesday in December, and then we still only have one meeting? I mean, I don't know.
Well, there's rules on things that have to occur at regular meetings as opposed to special meetings, and we're just, you know, we're just eliminating that. So, I mean, literally, all the proposed policy does is says that we'll go to the second regularly-scheduled meeting instead of the first one.
Okay. Okay, so what we're talking about here is page five of the documents, and this would be the redline version of what we'd be talking about this evening?
Yes, and, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that the council adopt that resolution and effect that policy change.
Any other questions?
Second.
All right. It's been regularly moved in second, and that this be accepted? Motion carries five to zero.
And I'm just going to make one comment. I'll be calling in for that second meeting, because I already know I'm out of town.
Item number 14, Mr. Kilbrug, please.
I'm actually going to punt to the city attorney on this one.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the staff report that you have before you was a kind of a last-minute staff report that came up as a result of a conversation I had with Chris Peterson, who's the Coastal Commission's general counsel, late on Friday afternoon. I want to thank Ms. Luna Reynosa for putting this staff report together and getting the agenda amended for our meeting tonight. I was out of the office and wasn't able to work on the report myself. With that in mind, I'd like to clarify that the recommendation is slightly different than the way the staff report came out. It was a little bit of a hurried effort, so there's some minor tweaks to this. But, by way of background, the council's aware that on October 5th, after the city had submitted the LCPA relating to short-term rentals to the Coastal Commission for further action, we received petitions for two referendums relating to the zoning ordinance and the specific plan amendment that had been the subject of your council action related to this matter. We contacted the Coastal Commission to make them aware that this had occurred, and I've had some discussion with Mr. Peterson over, you know, the legal ramifications of it. It's, you know, there's not a statute on point that outlines how you handle this situation, and there's not a whole lot of case law that's directly on point that addresses the issue. So, we had some early discussions, and then it came to our attention that the Coastal Commission had this matter on its agenda in November for concurrence with the executive director's determination that we had taken all the actions necessary to implement the LCPA. So, that led to some additional discussions, which culminated on Friday with Mr. Peterson asking me if I would present this to you and request the council to request the commission to continue the item. That gives them the ability to not even have to have a hearing on the matter. What they simply do is put into their agenda sort of a notation that the matter's been continued. If they have to do it on their own, then they have to call the matter and have hearings on it. As a practical matter, it's pretty clear that the commission intends to recommend continuing the item one way or another. This will save us the time and energy of having to go up there. It'll let residents know that the matter is not being heard, and I think most importantly, it's a neutral issue or a neutral item. I understand that there are, as we all know, there are competing views of this particular topic. We received some correspondence that's in the agenda packets that we received last night from an attorney representing the short-term rental proponents, I'll call them, questioning issues about the referendum. The continuance will simply give the commission the opportunity to take action on this item after all the questions related to the referendum have been sorted out. So, the recommended action would be revised slightly from your staff report to read as follows, that the city council authorized the city manager to request that the California Coastal Commission continue item 15A-City of Dana Point LCPA Amendment Number 1-14, LCP5-DPT1401505-1, Short-Term Rentals, scheduled for November 4th, 2016, until after final resolution of the related referendum, which has been presented to the city clerk, whether by final council action, vote, or other means. So, that's our recommended action amended, and to make, so you understand what we mean by that. The resolution of the referendum could mean that the registrar voter does not certify the signatures. It could mean that the council vote to undo the zoning ordinances that, to rescind the zoning ordinances that it adopted. It could mean that the matter's put out to a vote of the people and decided after vote of the people, or it could mean that there's some sort of litigation that challenges the referendum and sets aside, and there certainly could be other options that, you know, haven't come to light yet. But, the point is to ask the commission to continue their concurrence with the executive director until after whatever the final action is so that that can be sorted out. So, that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Is there any questions from council?
Yeah, just a brief question, Mr. Munoz. So, this is, the very limited question before us tonight is whether we instruct the city manager to make that, deliver that statement to the Coastal Commission with respect to the continuance as you read it. I would assume that this would be without prejudice to the LCPA process in general so that it is truly neutral to either side of what may turn out to be a controversy here.
That's exactly correct.
Okay, so, and that request came from the Coastal Commission, that after we notified the Coastal Commission that there is a pending referendum petition awaiting certification by the registrar?
That's right. Their legal counsel asked me to ask you to make that request on Friday afternoon. The staff report suggests it's slightly different than that. I just want to clarify that that was because I had leaned on Ursula to put this together for me while I was out of the office, so she didn't have the benefit of all the exact information.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from councilmembers?
We have three comments tonight. Barbara Wilson, followed by Jason, I always mess this up. What was it, Jason?
Coloso.
Coloso, that's it. And Mark Zandies. Zandies.
Zenitis.
Zenitis. Okay, Barbara Wilson, please. You might have to put your pronunciation on here like Mr. Marquedes did so I can get it right.
Good evening, city council and administrators. I appreciate the review. I appreciate the review of where we stand because seeing that letter this evening kind of really concerned me about how you would look at the hearing that the Coastal Commission was to have on the 4th. And I think that that is the right action to take, to get the signatures. And, you know, if you do decide to go to a vote, then, you know, that's your choice. I'd like to just explain a little bit that the citizens of Dana Point have spoken by obtaining 3,900 signatures, which was well beyond the 2,100 that was required for a referendum, is a clear overwhelming outcry not to pass the measure. There is no doubt, if this is put to a vote of our citizens, that it will be defeated. And rather than spend the tens of thousands of dollars to have a special election, I am asking that you repeal the ordinance and that a fraction of the cost to have a special election could be used to have community outreach efforts to hear what the citizens really want and need. I am confident that by seriously listening to the needs of our residents, we can craft an ordinance that all can accept. But it has to start by retaining local control of our residential neighborhoods. Another issue that I wanted to bring up was that last week, there was a discussion regarding a consortium of neighboring cities. In other words, San Clemente, Laguna, Laguna Niguel, San Juan, and others working together to solve problems. And as it was discussed, it seemed as though you did not feel that was a very good idea. But I wanted to say how important it is that we work with our neighboring cities. Much can be learned from them, and we can deal with common issues such as short-term rentals, sober living. For instance, the deposition of Santa Nofree's nuclear fuel and storage, and many other issues that we can learn from them. And we can work together as a unit and use their political strength as well as our own. So I hope you'll think about that. We cannot afford to have our city administrators and council operate in a vacuum when together we can make our city one that will prosper and one in which we can all be proud. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jason?
Mayor, City Council, city staff, thank you for the time today. My name is Jason Coloso. I'm a resident of Dana Point, and I represent an organization named Keep Dana Point Friendly, whose members include residents of Dana Point who own property used for short-term rentals, real estate professionals, business owners, and concerned residents. We support the LCPAs that were unanimously approved by the city council on May 17th of this year. Our LCPA keeps us in line with the constructs of the Coastal Act, which, while also providing the HOAs who make up the majority of our coastal zone, a mechanism to manage and limit short-term rentals in the community. I have some questions that I hope our council and staff can address before making the vote tonight. One, if we allow the CCC to vote on the LCPA and they approve, what happens if the referendum is successful? Alternatively, if we requested the CCC delay their vote and they agree, does that mean they extend the October 14th deadline they placed on the recommended LCPA changes? Two, if the referendum is successful, would a repeal of the ordinance put us at odds with the mandate of the Coastal Act to protect, encourage, and provide for lower-cost visitor and recreational facilities as envisioned in Public Resources Code 30213? Do the referendum thus violate state policy? Three, the referendum only looks to repeal the ordinances that were voted on on September 7th, but do not repeal the LCPA, which was voted on on May 17th. Aren't the referendum prohibited because they are inconsistent with the LCPA resolutions? Four, the Coastal Commission is voting on the LCPA, and the time to run a referendum against that has long passed since it was passed unanimously on May 17th. If the referendum does not repeal the LCPA and cannot, why would we ask the CCC to delay their decision-making on approving the LCPA? To close, we are proud that Dana Point has approved an LCPA, which satisfies the balance between the rights of owners and the mandate of the Coastal Act to protect, encourage, and provide for lower-cost visitor and recreational facilities as envisioned in Public Resource Code 30213. I would highly encourage you not to ask the Coastal Commission to delay their vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mark Zandides, please.
Thank you very much. Mark Zenidis. Two things. One is obviously the, this resolution or recommendation should be adopted. The last thing we want is more confusion by having the Coastal Commission have a hearing during the middle of a referendum process that's not yet ripe for consideration. Mr. Munoz mentioned the law is not clear, and it shouldn't be further muddied by Coastal Commission action at this stage of the proceedings. Secondly, Mr. Coloso raises a number of the points set forth in the Rosen letter that was, I got this afternoon, and I think this body got this afternoon. I would urge the council to have Mr. Munoz respond to that letter. I believe that, aside from the last allegation, which is a factual contention, the legal arguments that are made to the effect that the referendum is void or is out of time because it attacks the September 6th action by this body is, in my view, frivolous. And I believe that it would be the responsibility of the city, in particular this body, to direct Mr. Munoz to address the legal arguments made in that letter, publicize the city's position on that, and send that to the Coastal Commission so it doesn't have, and to the registrar, so there's no lingering confusion about whether or not this process should proceed. Because for the very reasons that I've heard stated by Mr. Coloso, the enthusiastic representative of a tiny minority in this community, it's very important that the citizens understand that this process is legitimate, the referendum is legitimate, and should not be undermined by what, in my view, are very likely, I haven't had a chance to study it, but from what I know of it, very likely meritless legal arguments. So I would ask and urge this body to direct Mr., ask Mr. Munoz to review that. I'm assuming that since the staff report which preceded the September 6th action by this body, I'm assuming that that ordinance, as amended by, with the new amendments supported by, or which the Coastal Commission asked this body to consider, that the action of September 6th was the final action on that ordinance and that therefore the referendum is not out of time. And that, I think, requires some clarification sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That closes the public comments portion of that item. Mr. Shuffel?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'd move the recommended action that the council approve a resolution authorizing the acting city manager to communicate with the Coastal Commission with the, and deliver the message that Mr. Munoz described earlier in this matter.
And if I could just clarify what you just said, we don't need a resolution. A simple motion suffices.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? It's been regularly moved in second. Please cast your vote. Motion carries five to zero. That concludes item number 14. There's no further public comments. Staff reports. Mr. Kilbrew.
Just one really quick one. We've hosted the Camp Ronald McDonald for Good Times cow sculptures in town for the past few months as a low-cost contribution to arts in the community. It was brought forth by the Arts and Culture Commission and supported by them, and the council approved our participation. And I just want to mention that Camp Ronald McDonald sent us a nice letter thanking us for hosting their cowabunga, cow sculptures in town. And I'd also want to let you know that Newport Beach is picking up the torch, and they're going to be displaying the cows next on their journey toward hopefully being sold and raising money for the camp. So, get a nice letter of thank you from Camp Ronald McDonald. That concludes my statement.
Thank you, Mr. Kilbrew. Mr. Munoz?
As many of the council, I'm sorry. Alicia Patterson is one of the associates at my firm, who many of you may know. The staff is familiar with her. I'd just like to wish her congratulations. This morning at 1:28 a.m., she gave birth to Parker Jean, her new baby daughter. And mother and daughter are both doing very well. And she'll be mortified that I said that in the meeting tonight.[1733.86][1733.86](Laughter).
Well, maybe she's not watching, Mr. Munoz. I'll move it to city council reports. We'll start with Mr. Olivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report, and I've already turned in my meeting notices to the city clerk.
Mr. Shuffel?
No comments this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
All right. Right along. Mr. Miller?
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Wow. Mayor Protem Bigsorek?
I've got to report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. I guess I will turn to my list of meetings to the city clerk. And I also have nothing else to say this evening, so. City council meeting is hereby adjourned. The next regular city council meeting will be November 15th, 5:00 p.m. in this council chamber.[1781.63][1781.63](Clerk claps)[1782.63]